Welcome, Chris.
Hello.
The Town Council.
I did not.
The Town Council work session for June 24th to order. We had an Arts District site visit, which was lovely. Thank you to those who participated. We hope to maybe do it with the NRO soon and some of our other partner arts. So that'd be great.
Mayor, we, I just want to note that we have added an exec session to the work session, and we'll enter into that after you get done with planning commission decisions.
Ah, great. Okay, I see it. So we're going to start with planning, well, start again with planning commission decisions. Several final decisions in there. Anything to discuss?
Well, I always forget what was supposed to it works as. I intend to call up the BGV parcel 2025-0116.
Okay.
That's all I'm supposed to say during.
Yeah, we can't really have a discussion. So should we just vote on that?
Um, no, you'll, you'll vote on it in the regular.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the regular meeting.
Okay.
So if there were any other comments or questions for staff, I think I would also note there was a public request for a, um, a call up as well, but since you have a council member requesting it, yeah.
Mine's not in relation to that.
Okay. Um, yeah, then we'll, we'll take the vote in regular meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's how it's done.
We're going to go into an exec session before we get to the legislative items.
All right, Dave, we updated the agenda so that.
I thought that was at the end. I apologize.
This time we're doing it using.
Delightful.
So I've asked for a motion under 2464024BNE to discuss negotiations related to town contracting regarding fiber, um, as well as receive legal advice related thereto. And we had a, yeah.
So moved.
Hey.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're going into executive session. We just came out of executive session and there were no decisions, so nothing to report. And we're going to move on with our agenda, which is the American Tower lease renewal agreement. Second reading.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I've got the second reading for the American Tower lease, uh, which is Suite 160 at the Breckenridge Professional Building. It's the leases for two four-year extensions, which will carry it till the end of January 2020, 2035, sorry. So any questions?
Thanks, Dave. Any questions? No? Looks good. We're ready for second reading.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to the ordinance approving amended and restated allo agreement. First reading. Welcome, Chris.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here to present for first reading the amended fiber lease and network operation agreement between the town and allo communications. This renegotiation was prompted by the Breckenridge Fiber Broadband Strategic Plan, which recommended changes to improve financial alignment and clarify lease provisions. Key improvements include increasing the town's share of qualified revenue from 25 to 50%. It adds 70% share of dark fiber revenue for the town. It removes automatic renewal of the lease after the initial 10-year term, and it establishes a 18-month wind down period if the lease is terminated. These amendments give the town greater operational flexibility. They increase our returns on our infrastructure investment and ensure that the fiber 9600 network continues to serve the needs of the community. I'm happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Good question for Chris. All very pleased with this new agreement. Thank you very much for all the work on it.
Great, thank you very much. Same effort. I have the next one, too.
You do. All right, we're ready for it tonight.
Great. Um, so this agenda item is the first reading of a new 10-year Comcast franchise agreement for cable television services. The renewal incorporates updated fiscal, legal, and P-PEG support provisions aligned with current regulations and market trends. The agreement preserves the town's oversight authority. It maintains franchise fee revenues and ensures continued support for public, educational, and government programming. Joining us today is Wilson Scarborough, the town's legal counsel, and Andy Davis from Comcast, and we can answer any questions you may have.
All right, questions on this ordinance approving Comcast franchise agreement? No? I think we're ready to move forward with it. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we're moving on to approval of the childcare intergovernmental agreement.
Okay, that's me. Um, let me get to the right page. So, um, Julia helped me put together the memo that's in the packet that describes the creation of the First Steps Child Care Tuition Program in the 2324 school year. Um, as some of you may recall, the presented, the durstick. Some of you may recall the presented, the jurisdictions percentage split was determined at that time based on how we split the costs of the communication center because we didn't have anything else to go by. Now we have data, and so as the memo states, we're using the locations where our families live and where they work to determine what each jurisdiction should pay into the First Steps program. We talked about this with all of the jurisdictions. Everyone generally agreed to this format. Three of the jurisdictions have approved the IGA. Three of us are planning to approve this week. At some point, it will be going to the Board of County Commissioners, and it's in ECO's hands right now, though there are no substantive changes to the way ECO operates in this. It's really to address, address mostly the funding mechanism and the, actually, the mechanism for determining how much each jurisdiction should fund. I think I put in there, and so I just want to talk a little bit about that we're, we as a group, as the managers and as the board, kind of administering this program, are still talking with the county about using, potentially using some of the Strong Futures Funds for this early childhood program, which is, there is a bucket in Strong Futures for that purpose. It pays for Summit Pre-K and helps with Head Start and some of the other programs that ECO runs. And this First Steps program has been wildly successful. ECO's done a great job of getting kids into the program, getting families funded, and getting in-home childcare centers to be licensed. So we've increased the number of children that are actually eligible for scholarships. And so that's something that we are still working on. So this amount of seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, it's, you know, our percentage is a little bit less than what it was before. I think it was thirty-six percent. Now we're at about thirty-two percent. But that number may change. And so two things I think are important. One is that we will look at the numbers every year to determine percentages should change. And if we are successful in getting some Strong Future dollars or having, potentially having the program funded by Strong Futures, then we'll be able to allocate this money towards other childcare priorities. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Shannon?
Shannon, how's the waiting of where they reside versus where parents live? How does that balance that?
D fifty, we added them together and divided in half. Just, yeah, to make it simple.
Thank you.
Anything else? No? All right. Thank you. Okay, we're moving into the manager's report. Public projects update. Shannon?
I'm Kristen. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Welcome.
I don't have anything new to add. I'm happy to take questions, and Kristen's here to answer any Doug Parker fiber questions.
All right. Questions about the memo?
Shannon, has anything changed on Carter Park from when we saw it a year ago or so?
The dog park? No, everything's the same from the year ago. Just construction's gonna start around July twenty-first.
Will we be able to phase that where people will be able to use the dog park during that, or will it be shut down?
We're looking at phasing options. We want to keep a small section to the northeast open during construction, but it'll probably move around depending on where the contractor needs to go.
Right.
When are we thinking completion?
Um, this fall for the first phase, and then we'll look at a second phase for next year. Anything else?
How's that Culver project go?
Broken Lands? It's going slowly at the moment.
Are we gonna be on schedule for that, do you think?
We'll be okay so far. We're having a lot of utility conflicts as we try to get in the water lines and the water services. So there's a lot of Excel in the way, a lot of Comcast and Lumen in the way. So we're working through that. It's just going a little slower right now. It's been a frustrating couple of weeks, but they're doing well.
Yeah, what's completion on that? I can't remember. Pardon me?
November. Big one.
That's a huge project.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much. Sometimes stays mobility.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Nothing additional for your mobility update, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Matt, it seems like the promo for Breck Pride Week was really successful. Are there other events through the summer that you're thinking of town having a promo code to encourage?
We could absolutely consider any of them. Teddy is out at this current moment doing an actual ride with the CML group, so. Yes, we could, and there's not one in specific in mind, but we would be happy to work with any.
That draw a lot of folks and to advance our more boots and bikes. And then can you tell us about what's happening tomorrow with Bike to Work Day?
I do not have very much. I don't know if, my lovely.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, the rec center and Pat Reyes is taking the lead, and we have Cool River treats and orange juice and coffee in Blue River Plaza. For anybody that is biking around, doesn't have to be to work, just bike to Blue River Plaza. But there's plenty of treats to go around.
Great, thanks, John.
Just to clarify, I ride my bike to work every day, so.
Blue River Plaza.
The number on the, the e-bikes have kind of flattened out year over year. Is it weather-based in your opinion?
I would say a hundred percent of it is weather-based. We have a lot of bikes out there. We have a lot of people that are engaged with it. Just watching over the last week as the NRO musicians have arrived, we're seeing days well over three hundred, three hundred and twenty, three hundred and fifty rides a day, which is record-breaking for any time. So I think that we'll see it pick up. I do think that those last three weeks of May were really just weather-driven impacts.
And our contractor is staying on top of repairs and charging and.
They are. We've had a couple of incidents with some bikes being damaged, but they have stayed on top of them and swapping out batteries. And things seem to be working well this year. I think balancing, normally we have a plan of having four to five bikes at every station. You'll probably see more of the, more than that at most stations this year, so the numbers seem to be well handled. We're not having empty stations at all.
Wonderful.
It's great to see Thursday, the number of bikes down by the arts district for, you know, had the, had the farmer's market and the Thursday night BCA event.
Yeah.
A lot of locals rode their bikes in.
Yeah, it was fantastic. We definitely got the, the bit of feedback that we need more bike recs, so those will be out there on Thursday. So we have a lot more on the way, thanks to Scott Jackman and team.
I like seeing it all piled up. That was great.
Pretty cool, yeah.
Matt, I was really interested in the parking ramp solution to the lighting. And kudos for getting that done. I think that's incredible. Does anybody have a feel for what that might save in utility expenses? Those lights aren't just on all the time.
We don't know yet, but we know, we'll know very quickly. So I don't have quite an idea yet.
When you do, I think that'd be great for your report to see how that works out.
Sounds good.
You.
On mobility? Are you doing sustainability too?
We'll be happy to take any questions back for sustainability.
Any questions on sustainability? Okay. I think we're good. Thank you very much. Next up is housing update. Is there any? I think there was.
We had a meeting today, but I don't know if Darcy was gonna update on that or wait for your minutes.
Sorry, Darcy, we're running a little fast.
Hi, everyone. We actually don't have any updates in the packet. We had a meeting for the work group today, so that'll be in the next two weeks. If there's any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions? Do you still have money for housing helps?
We do. A bit. So that is something.
Never enough, Kelly.
We were actually just discussing that in the work group, so we have a little bit, but we have quite a significant amount left in the buy-down fund, so.
Oh, okay.
Reallocating, yeah.
Great. Good to hear. Anything else? Thanks, Darcy.
Thank you.
All right, open space. Not to be confused with our discussion later.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Minutes from the Bozak meeting on June sixteenth are in the packet. Happy to take any questions on that or any other open space issues.
Any questions on this part? Wow. Great group today. All right, I think we're good. We'll see you again, though.
Okay.
All right, open space, committee reports. Financials. Pam? Tracy?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have the report for the first five months of twenty twenty-five. May reflects April tax collections. Overall, we are seven hundred thousand above twenty-five budgeted revenues in the excise fund and six hundred thousand before prior year. Sales tax is currently a hundred thousand behind year-to-date budget and behind half a million in comparison with prior year. Accommodations tax is flat in comparison with budget and two hundred thousand in comparison with prior year. Real estate transfer taxes ahead a million in comparison with budget and two hundred thousand in comparison with prior year. Our year-to-date April net taxable sales are behind three point two one percent. Just looking at April as a standalone, we are behind one percent in comparison with twenty twenty-four. We saw slight declines in retail. We detail in short-term lodging, and we saw increases in restaurant, bar, grocery, liquor, and construction. Retail in town the month of April was ahead one point three three percent. Retail out of town was behind five point six five percent. Real estate transfer tax for the month of May came in strong, a hundred and thirty thousand over May of twenty twenty-four and almost two hundred thousand over twenty twenty-three. I'm happy to take any questions before I pass it on.
Thank you, Pam. Any questions on this part? Thank you very much. Tracy? Oh, Dave? Sorry.
So as we said last month, we were changing the format a little bit. So just so you've got year-to-date to our budget, and now we're gonna include a forecast to the budget for the full year. What you see here is what we did in April. And then in July, we will have an updated forecast. We'll present it probably in the month of. But you'll see the new forecast in July to the April forecast, and that's the other column you see. So as we go through the year, you'll see any changes that are fleshing out through the year based upon any new assumptions. Our last one will be in October, which we will do for the, updated for the fourth quarter to get a full year view, and that'll drive what we do for year-end budget appropriations as well. So just wanted to close the loop with that from what we talked about last month. And then you also have the updated cash flow based upon that as well, which you'll get updates when we do the forecast update as well. We'll update the cash flow also to see how we're tracking. And then Tracy can go through any questions on the financials.
Great. Any questions on the financials?
Dave, Tracy, I just want to compliment you on the, this financial report and showing the forecast where we are at, you know, for the year as well as a cash flow statement. I think this is indispensable information for us to make decisions up here on projects, on contributions, and moving forward, and to really give us an idea of where we are versus trying to decipher where we are on phasing. Having, having this information is fantastic. So thank you for the work, and thank you for taking that suggestion or, and running with it and doing more than we could have hoped for.
All right, thank you.
Thank you both very much. All right, communications and community engagement update. Hold on. Or Annette?
We're gonna do a bit of musical chairs, since there are three of us in two chairs, but I'll kick it off, and then I'll step back and then they'll come up. This was, and we can pull up the presentation. This was our first attempt at a quarterly report for you all, following our annual report that you all got earlier in the year. And we just wanted to try to capture the highlights from the first quarter. And in the memo, it, it basically goes over a few of the things that we felt were successes. And then we'll go through some of these slides just real briefly and answer questions as we go.
Hello, Council and Mayor. We can go next. Maybe. Okay. Do it that way. So our first area we're gonna look at is race break. Imperial Challenge was new to the town and the rec department this year. Turned out very well, so we, we did a lot of extra marketing since it was new for us. Really, the messaging was very personality, personality-driven and kind of the history of the event, which you'll see we're doing more of that. We, we had a goal of a hundred and fifty participants, and we did, did end up with two hundred. The second is our summer race break activities, basically the Summit Mountain Challenge and the Summit Trail Winning Series. Very socially-based marketing. We have posts going out weekly. These users are very Instagram-heavy. We do also have some radio going behind it, a weekly radio campaign with Crystal Radio. We have just taken over the socials on this from the department, so this is the first time our communications group is working on that. And upcoming, we have Firecracker Fifty. This campaign is going on currently. Again, another program where we're highlighting the personality and the history of the event. So we're doing a social media campaign with content such as the early years, the founding of the event. Local legends will be coming out tomorrow, and women who ride the firecracker. So this is going out in emails and socials. A lot of what we're doing, let's see, for Firecracker, we did nine hundred and eighty-five participants last year. We're at about six hundred. So we're, we're about a hundred people down, but we do pick up quite a bit of that in the last couple of weeks. And this, of course, is the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Firecracker. And that, and then we will also have some combined advertising for the Independence Day ten K and the Strider Bike Race. And that'll be combined, and that's gonna start this weekend. And next slide. We also had a pretty good-sized project updating the golf website. The golf course has a couple of new pieces of technology, so they have a new T-sheet program. And also they're running their clinics and programs through another program. So we needed to connect those into the website. They also wanted us to take out, to kind of simplify the content, simplify the navigation. We did also, Grant also had some really nice drone footage taken last summer that we got added to our homepage. We had some other video, so, but this is much nicer video. We, and then we are also, the site, as you see, we've got a lot of, a good increase in site traffic, visitors, visits, unique visits, and page views. And we are doing something similar with the Ice Arena webpages coming up later this year.
Annette, why do you think there are so many new visitors to the golf webpage?
Um, I, we've directed a lot more of the registrations. A lot of the local people had to register through, through the website, so there's a lot, that's a big part of it, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry about our slideshow. I don't know what's happening. You have these slides in your packet as well. So water campaign, just to touch on it briefly. We are launching this in July. This is the second phase. You may remember the first phase. We are launching this in July. This is the second phase. You may remember the first phase, phase was done by launch. We took over the campaign from launch so that we'd have more control over the graphics and the creative. And also we wanted to ensure there was enough diversity in the images that we featured and, and highlight some of our local partners. So we wanted to specifically thank for this campaign, all of the town departments that participated. You can see in the photos. We also had the Summit High School Girl Soccer Team and BGV, as the housekeeping staff was very willing participants. They did a really awesome job and they were really excited to do it, which was a great partnership with the town. This campaign is a little self-explanatory with the bullets on the screen. You will start seeing this starting in July and it will run through the end of the year with those kind of images and those ideas of, of Breckenridge Water is good. Bring your bottles, fill it up. So then the next one was the Dark Sky. You're all very well aware of Dark Sky at this point. This was the first full campaign that our division has completed from start to finish. It started in January with a proposal to, and then we ran the campaign with the idea that it would be ending July 1st. And that was the proposal that we brought to you all. Now we know that the Dark Sky conversations will continue throughout the rest of the year, but the campaign in general was, had very specific goals. And we really felt like it was successful in accomplishing those goals of education and general community awareness of what the, what Dark Sky and Dark Sky compliant features or fixtures were. So as we move into this July 1st compliance date, there are only a couple pieces left of this campaign. I mean, it's really only a week away. And then we will be just assisting the department in communication about compliance. We do plan to further these messages when we get closer to the, the Dark Sky designation, if that's what we still are moving toward at Council's direction. We can pick up the campaign again with some general community outreach at that point. But we really feel like we learned a lot. We hope you all saw the campaign. The examples on the screen are the places where the campaign appeared. In addition, it was on buses, I believe it was on some of the buses and on the carts at City Market. So we, we really feel like it was a good test for us to run a full campaign with our own graphics and we hope to do that more in the future. We'll bring that to you in that same way.
Helen, throughout this campaign, did you feel certain strategies were more impactful or you got more engagement? Or are there lessons learned from this?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, one of the interesting things was that, you know, the Summit Daily Digital News Ads, which I personally was a little skeptical of, got a lot of readership. So the interesting thing about marketing, as you know, viewers don't always account for engagement. And so we're also, in addition to numbers and looking at how many people clicked on certain things or looked at certain pages and saw the ads, we're looking at engagement. Engagement for us is mostly measured through social media and digital components where people, that's how people communicate, emails, comments on social media, through kind of those digital methods. It's not as often that we from marketing here have people call us and, you know, and ask questions. But we did, from a social media perspective or a digital marketing perspective, we felt that the campaign was pretty successful because we were not hearing huge amounts of, say, well, even if we heard negative feedback, at least they're paying attention, right? We just weren't hearing a ton, but what we were hearing was people who were generally in support of the idea of Dark Sky. And we saw that as our main purpose because we were less about the compliance factor and more about the education. And that was always the intent of the campaign. So obviously now moving past that July 1st day, we move into more into compliance and that's going to be harder conversations. But we can assist the Community Development Department as needed. And we'll continue to catch, like, capture numbers when we can. We're really trying to capture all the data from that campaign.
Website accessibility. So July 1st is our compliance state for the new state House Bill. It has changed a little bit, so it's changed in that it wants to, that the requirement now is to demonstrate ongoing, ongoing compliance, ongoing improvement. Our next part of that requirement is having a quarterly progress report, so that our next report on that will be in July. You can see some of the metrics on there as far as documents that we've put in for remediation. The other piece of that is that, right, so we had our original overview from our vendor, from the vendor. So now we're going to move to, as we do the ongoing improvements and ongoing cleanup, we have a program called Moncito that will run on the main website, the rec website and the golf website. And then sustainability, sustainability housing, oh, and yes, that will also cover transit. Sustainability and housing are on a different platform, but they do have a, a widget with that program that will do the same thing, that continues to monitor broken links, you know, text issues, photo issues, alt text issues. So we do have those in place to continue with those quarterly reports.
And so from a general standpoint, we feel we're in a really good spot right now. We are, we consider ourselves nearly fully compliant and definitely compliant within the law that takes effect July 1st. Because the law was adjusted a little bit to allow for more flexibility and just to show that, you know, we're trying to improve always. So we do have, if you haven't been to Accessible Breck on our website, it would be good to become familiar with that. That's the page with all of our ADA resources and I know Danny had talked about it, so. And then Rocky Chatbot, you all have heard about it. We actually, we feel like it's working really well. You see here, we had a total of 407 questions that were asked. Quick and simple answers, getting people exactly what they need. Some examples of things that people ask for. The most common questions are about recreation center passes and programs. So.
And that's really how, you know, as you can imagine, you guys have seen the volume at the Rec Center front desk. And Rec Center is our main front desk for all of the facilities. So anything we can do to kind of cut down on that phone volume, that, and that was a piece of the grant as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, this was all done through a grant. And, and then we'll bring some more examples to you at our next report. And construction projects were asked about a lot. We think this is a good resource for the community. And Flor is going to talk a bit about social equity.
It's kind of a lever.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Mayor. So yes, I'm moving on to social equity. So we've been doing a lot of the celebration and diversity, same, a lot of similar initiatives that we did last year, but we've continued to see growth in them, like our Neuro Diversity Awareness Month. The stickers ran out within the first, like, one of them was the first day that we put them out. And the other one was the weekend. The Rec Center was fully empty by Monday and we had to put them out on Friday. So people are becoming aware and we continue to educate and the people who help us, like, like our community partners and our subcommittee members, they help continue to spread the word and the messaging and the education. And another one that I wanted to also highlight was Women's Month. We had some great nominations. Some of those women wouldn't have been recognized otherwise, so they weren't women that were like out in public or highlighted or did some sort of work that always showcased their work. Some of them were women that really, community members just wanted to ensure they got highlighted and their stories were told about the awesome things they were doing. The women that you see on there, Itzel, she got nominated four times by different people, so she's doing some awesome things. She's, she's really amazing. Then our Immigration Rights and Advocacy Group continued to do the I Am Summit 2.0. We had eight participants. I think that's a little less than last year, but I think we, we think that the results are from the given climate. And then six different industries were represented through these videos and we try to focus on education in business. And our, sorry, also with our grants, I think this has, is really growing. Our applications continue to get better as they come through. They're becoming more project-specific and our subcommittee is engaging in deeper conversations, fully analyzing the impact that each application or each grant will have and looking at the growth that it'll have on the organization and the community. Some of the examples that we did, some Spanish health, mental health and wellness conversations or trainings that Building Hope did for our community that they wouldn't have had the funding to do so otherwise. They partnered with local therapists who provided that. Another example is the NRO had a grant for an event that would support women in the arts. And mountain mentors, we helped with transportation to, for mentees and mentors to go to the Rockies game together. So those are just some examples of the things we're helping with. Any questions? And if not, we're gonna take, I wanted you guys to take a look at our, at our video.
Hi, my name is Miguel Angelibarra. I am from Mexico.
Hi, my name is Susanna Molano Myers and I'm from Mexico.
Hello, my name is Tanya. I am from Mexico.
Hi, my name is Gerania Reynoso. I am from Pijuana, Mexico. I work with Mountain Dreamers in Frisco, Colorado.
I contribute to Summit County. I work in our restaurants places and I try to leadership to my team so for us to make much better for this community.
I work for BHH Partners, an architectural firm here in Silverthorne.
And I contribute to Summit County with my two businesses. The first one is Local Legends. I offer bookkeeping and accounting services in Breckenridge. And the second one is Tribe Yoga Summit. We are located in Frisco. And it's not just a yoga studio. We also offer workshops and all kinds of special classes.
I love my work because I love to work with community leaders to empower them and elevate their voices.
What I enjoy the most in my work is to help my clients make their dreams come true.
I am Summit.
I am Summit.
I am Summit.
I am Summit.
And again, just as a reminder of why we do, we do the videos, it's one to highlight our community members and all the amazing things that they do within our community. And then also to help those other immigrant community members who don't feel like they contribute or sometimes feel like they don't belong, feel like, oh, wait, I, I might work in something similar or I do something similar. I am worthy, worthy of being highlighted or I am part of this community. I am, I am Summit. So that's another reason. And then the other one is to educate people who also might need to hear that we have great community members who are from other places, but still contribute and do great things, so. Yeah. And then those are some of the things that I think as a department we've seen that are really working. I think the biggest thing moving forward is we will be giving you guys monthly reports on some of the successes that we'll be seeing and provide you with some examples. We have seen that the videos have been very engaging. It's, it's probably one of our biggest successes from the videos. We've also gotten the quote up there. It was from a community member when we were at a subcommittee meeting where they were saying that they love how we are making all the videos and supporting them and they feel like Breckenridge is really caring about them. And that's in regards to our Spanish speakers, Spanish-speaking communities. Because our videos, we try to do most of them bilingual, but both languages get a lot of engagement and people view. And as you guys know, today, that's what we do. We watch videos. We don't really read or anything else. Anyway. And then other things that people also really like are those messages or the, the posts that are not always so, like, very technical or very specific, but just pretty things that people get to enjoy. And we could get, get to celebrate together, like those examples that are on there. But yeah, any questions or anything else that we?
Questions for Flor? We do love those videos. They're really great. Yeah, anything else?
I have a quick question for Helen, if that was okay. You, you alluded to it earlier, but that impressions don't always equal my connection. I was just curious if in future quarterly reports, if it was possible to find some other metrics that might be, might paint a more accurate picture of what's working and what's not. You know, I think it was to Dick's question of, you know, what is, what's performing, whether it's click-through rates or number of pages visited, time on the site, bounce rate, things like that, that may, that may paint a, a real accurate picture or a better picture of these, these forums are working. Cause at the end of the day, we really, I, I would really like to start figuring out how to reach our community and what the best way is and what metric, or you know, what medias to use. And if we know that, you know, the newspaper digital reaches X percent and they spend this much time on the site and then doing it through Facebook is half that, or I think it might guide us better for our resources. And especially as you start working with more and more departments, I think that will be really, really helpful.
Yeah, um, there were a lot of questions there, but we do have Google Analytics that we use on our websites and they track time spent, click-through rates, all of that. You know, I will say, some of the more traditional forms of media, it's hard to capture. Website is something, we want to direct all traffic to our website, but as Flor indicated, people don't always go straight to websites. They look at videos to get the information. They maybe don't want to click through as much. So those are things we are learning. We do have bounce-back rates for newsletters. We capture all of that data for, you know, the Connect with Breck and the Council recap newsletters. We are exploring all options and we're open to all options. I'm really hopeful. I had a really good candidate pool for the position that I'm filling. And I'm really hopeful that the person who comes in there will have some, a new, fresh pair of eyes to see kind of maybe where we can fill in some gaps because we're always looking to improve. And we recognize there are people who get things in very different ways. You know, there's a segment of the population who only looks at paper newspapers. There's, you know, so we advertise in the Summit Daily Paper Newspaper. We still do the radio because there's a segment of the population who listens to the radio every day on their way to work and that's how they get the news, the local news. We, you know, have also, social media obviously is a big thing. And, and, you know, the e-newsletters and are pretty popular right now. People are seeing them. Although there are a lot of people who don't actually read them, they just delete. At least we get them to their inboxes. We do know we need to do a campaign to get people to subscribe to all of our methods of communicating. And so that's something that's on the horizon as well.
That sign me up link on the, the website is phenomenal. It's, and I would love to promote that when possible to, to showcase it more. Because it does provide the opportunity for the resident or the community member or the part-time resident to be able to subscribe to the things that they're most interested in.
Absolutely. Getting them to that signup link is a bigger challenge.
Yeah, we were actually talking about, maybe, I mean, this is obviously just small potatoes, but it's just one of many places that you could maybe do a barcode at, you know, like a scan at the farmer's market, at the rec center. Just putting those out for people to make it more, because I actually didn't even know how to find it on the webpage. But once, you know, once it's more accessible, I think people will really sign up and get their information that way.
Very good ideas, especially now that we have a farmer's market.
It helps.
But thank you. Any other questions while I'm here?
No. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Looked you, old boy.
All right, we're gonna move on to Breckenridge Fiber Broadband Strategic Plan. Hey, hello everyone. So we're here to present the Fiber ninety-six hundred strategic plan. We've got Chris Liberto. And then in the audience, we have Tim Burke from Essential Broadband Consulting. And then also a team from ALO. We've got Bob, who's our GM for Colorado, a couple of sales guys. So everyone's here to support us. So we began this plan in 2024 with the help of Essential Broadband Consulting. They were here to help us evaluate the performance, sustainability and future direction of our broadband project. So this report outlines recommendations to improve our operational efficiency, guide our capital spending and gain influence over the long-term management of our goals for the network. So some of the key takeaways from the plan include, the town has passed forty-seven percent of the homes and businesses in town with fiber. And we've connected over eleven hundred customers. So with this twenty twenty-five construction that we're doing right now, we're gonna pass nineteen hundred more units, which equates to a total of sixty-seven percent of the town. So we're making strides in covering the town right now. So far, we spent thirty-two point seven million dollars and we have a current take rate of twenty-four percent. The original ALO lease was heavily weighed in ALO's favor with the town having minimal control over marketing, pricing and performance, as you saw in Chris's earlier presentation. So the plan recommends establishing KPIs and aligning capital investment with high return areas to maximize efficiency. The plan also outlines six strategic paths with one preferred route. This one is to renegotiate the ALO contract while continuing capital investment. This will help us maintain flexibility while building long-term value. So as far as implementation goes, we've already implemented several of the plan's tactical and technical recommendations. On the tactical side, we've renegotiated the ALO contract, which you just saw. We've expanded staff support. We've prioritized continuous neighborhood builds. We've targeted MDUs with bulk service agreements and we're setting up strategic partnerships with key stakeholders. On the technical side, we've optimized our construction requirements. We are routing our routes in cost-effective ways. We're doing less trenching, more boring, staying in the shoulders, out of the pavement. We've adjusted our fiber design to, to be better served to the areas the fiber's going. And we're focusing on high-density areas to minimize or minimize the cost per home passed. So we're gonna continue to implement the plan recommendations to maximize the value for the town. And I'm happy to take any questions. In the memo, we recommended strategic path number five, which is to continue capital investment in the fiber network while operating under the newly renegotiated agreement with ALO. So Chris and I can take questions or if you have anything to add.
Well said. Thank you.
So when you say the town has passed forty-seven percent of its homes, does that like literally mean that fiber is running? Yes, like they could be connected easily with us, a short drop. It doesn't mean that we've connected forty-seven percent.
How are we currently handling wiring of multi-unit buildings?
Yeah, so this implemented a new strategy to wire the whole M D U when they sign a bulk agreement. So we haven't had any so far that have not signed bulk agreements this year, but that was something in the past where we would wire the whole building and then have twenty percent or thirty percent of the building sign up for service. So we're kind of looking at that in a new way and saying, let's have a bulk agreement signed before we do all the wiring.
And what percentage of a building?
So if we have a bulk agreement, it would be a hundred percent of the building.
Okay.
Are any data that compares the take rate in our community versus other take rates, other communities or markets?
Yes, and I'm trying to remember. I know that the Wellington has a really high take rate for, you know, comparison. I think it's around sixty-eight percent. I don't know exactly what the take rates.
I would say our current take rate is rather low and we, we need a bigger focus on bringing in customers that we've already passed with the network. Currently, we're operating in Breckenridge, we're operating under a duopoly, really homeowners and MDUs only have two choices, either ALO internet or Comcast. So that, that's a major KPI that we worked into the amended network agreement is that our target at the end of ten years is to be at around forty, forty percent take rate. So we need to improve on that number.
The number of second homeowners that we have affects that take rate?
I don't think so. I think that it's, it's a matter of homes that require high bandwidth and homes that don't, right? I think that there's, there's homes that have younger generations with them and they require more bandwidth in their home. But I think as, as the, the market matures, we're gonna see that a lot of people are moving away from traditional cable television and moving to streaming services. And as that transition happens, I think there'll be a higher demand for the product that we offer.
Makes sense.
Are people, do you want to discuss the pathways or are people pretty comfortable with staff suggestion of strategic path number five? Are there questions about any of the other pathways?
Question is probably for Chris on the, you know, you're saying that the value of continuing supporting the fiber, it's that it provides another option for our residents, our community members. Beyond that is, do you see future value that's outside of providing another, a second option for internet access to the fiber that is being placed?
By, is your question by adding, by us?
By having fiber and continuing with, with it, is there, do you see other opportunities down the road to utilize it?
There are, and we're, we're currently exploring leasing some of our fiber to a cellular provider so they can distribute five G towers within Breckenridge. I think that any market that operates with a monopoly as the primary ISP and doesn't give anybody choices that they can operate however they want and provide subpar services to the homes in the community without any repercussion. I think that we completely disrupted the whole telecom industry within Breckenridge by providing a modern forward-looking solution, which is fiber to the home. So I think that it, it was really important for us to take this on. Because without us taking it on, I don't think anybody, another telecom provider would have came into our community and created, created the competition for Comcast.
Could you just maybe talk a little bit about smart city solutions that may add to your?
Yeah, I was just thinking about that too, that we are looking at other options for smart cities, like connecting our street signals, doing traffic counts, using that fiber for other things, not just internet, but looking at ways to operate our streetlights or other things in town that could be automated. So there are other uses for the fiber other than just internet. Anything else?
Yeah, I'm certainly supportive of renegotiating the contract. I think that'd be great. I'd love, as we kind of evaluate the capital spend going forward, to kind of dig into some more of the details and get some numbers on some of these scales here to understand kind of the debt load and, and expected revenue and previous revenue. And then what do we need to do to grow that? And then also to understand kind of that dark fiber revenue opportunity as well, just so we can evaluate, hey, if we're gonna spend twelve million, is that the best use of twelve million dollars of, of the town's resources? And yeah, do we wind that up a little more, you know, do we do it more or less? So just some hard numbers there and some projections. Five, ten years out to, yeah, just understand the scale of the ask on the capital spend.
Definitely.
Get valuable for me at least. Thanks.
Are you guys in support of strategic path five, knowing that we would be wanting some more data and information? That's the twelve million dollars over ten years. That's what we're sort of, but we'll be able to review that every year during budget season.
I'm highly supportive of moving forward with that. Just as it is, I appreciate all the work and effort that went into the strategic plan to really, instead of just blindly following, just continue trenching or continue investing without really a, a direction. I think this is really, really great. And I appreciate all the time and effort that went into it and I'd be supportive of staff suggestions.
Great. All right. Looks like you have support for strategic path five and definitely echo what Jay said. Obviously, a ton of work went into this. So thank you very much for working with us.
Thank you.
Ready for the next one? All right, we're gonna move on to childcare center maintenance proposal.
Thank you, Mayor Town Council. I have Matt Pellet with me today at the table to take the hot questions. And John Dor, who's been a big part of this, and Shannon, of course, as well, as we kind of all worked on this proposal. So what we have before you this afternoon is a proposal for long-term childcare maintenance, childcare center maintenance. And really since two thousand and seven, the town has been putting money into our childcare centers and our childcare program, tuition support programs. Our goal as a community and town council has been to always make this childcare accessible, affordable and quality care for our workforce. So as the programs continue to change, you know, we've, we've seen with the childcare I G A and S B K that some of that funding is, is alternating. And with that too, we also have our aging facilities. So there's four facilities in town, two which the town owns the actual buildings and two centers which are on land leases with the town. Those land lease centers do translate to town centers over time. So what we're looking at is, you know, how do we help support those aging centers? We're looking at a uniform, proposing a uniform maintenance fund as sort of this proactive approach. And what we've proposed as well is in-kind walkthroughs by our facility staff that Matt would lead up. And that really is to be able to identify any issues before they happen. And to make sure the systems are running correctly, to take a preventative approach as well in that case. So we're asking here for fifteen thousand dollars to each of the four centers annually for a total of sixty thousand dollars to fund repairs and maintenance for those facilities over the year and also for their maintenance contracts, HVAC maintenance contracts. One facility, which is Timberline, currently has an HVAC maintenance contract, which is three thousand dollars a year. And, you know, it'd be great if the other centers could have one. We did have an incident this week or last week where we had an HVAC problem at one of the center buildings that we do not own. So this is very timely discussion. And we think that the fifteen thousand dollars would really help the centers. The centers are very excited about this proposal. As you know, sometimes we're able to do some of the work on the buildings that we own. And then for some of the centers we don't, then sometimes we're able to help or sometimes they're pulling together money from different places or asking for volunteer parents to, to help out. So this will sort of create some stability for those centers and allow them to focus on childcare. Also, we're asking for a facilities fund for the childcare centers. This would be for long-term major repairs for things like roof repairs, HVAC replacements, for example. And it might be needed to be seeded upfront in this upcoming budget year with like three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. Although we right now don't know the, the exact amount. Matt's team would need to do a more thorough walkthrough of buildings we don't own to determine kind of the age of the roofs and things like that. And so we would, if council gave the go-ahead for a seeding of facilities fund for our childcare centers, then we would look at doing that assessment right away on those two other centers and figure out what that might be. And take that, that back to you. So with reviewing those proposed funds with the centers, we would do, ask them to submit invoices quarterly to start so that we, we can understand how much they're paying out. And if that number, that fifteen thousand dollar number each is correct, accurate number. And if they're able to keep and roll that number over for future, well, maybe larger maintenance issues that they might run into down the road, because the town, I'm sure wouldn't really everything inside. That's just not what we do on our leased buildings. Also, we would do an annual review at the end with the centers to go over that assessment. And we would do an analysis again of the, the facilities before we go ahead and recommend the amount for seeding of the facilities fund, if we went ahead with that as well. So if you have any questions for us, we're all here and available. Thank you.
Questions on this maintenance?
Julia, how would you see the facilities fund working? Would it be like a, an application and grant fund? Would you be looking at matching funds raised by the centers? Have you thought through how, how you might distribute that money?
Yeah, it, we would end up, if approved, going into a maintenance agreement with these facilities, with these operators. And we might look at like eighty percent the town covers and twenty percent the center covers, for example. Could be an option, but we have not determined those terms.
I think we'd like your feedback on whether, how you would like to see it handled. I think Matt could comment on at least how we handle, right now handle the buildings that we own.
Yeah, so currently with our facilities fund for this building, for example, there, we've identified the top building systems that will require replacement at some point. We look at the age of the equipment and we look at the potential cost in the future of what that replacement would be. And we try to save, get to that amount by the time it needs replacement. So with all of our building systems, it, it comes fairly complicated as, as far as the document and spreadsheet goes. With varying timeframes, you know, roof might be thirty years, the boiler might be in the next ten years. And here, the carpet might be due right now. So we analyze all of that and we look at what that replacement cost was ten years ago. And we, we add an escalator every year to try to get to a point where we have enough money to pay for that replacement when it becomes due. We would probably do something similar there. And it would take our crews going through and, and seeing what age of the equipment is. Having that seed money becomes important then, because we're, we're kind of behind the eight ball when we, we start. And all of our, all, each of these four facilities are at varying points with, with those lives. So that's, that's how we operate currently. Uh, that's, that's how we operate currently.
Thank you. That helps. Did you have a question? Other questions?
And Matt, you feel like you have adequate staff, adequate manpower to take this on?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, so uh, really what we're proposing uh, with, with our involvement in these are our building safety check that we do at all of our locations. So that's where we're going through our building systems. Uh, we're checking belts, motors. We're verifying that uh, all of our inspections, so backflow, fire suppression, fire sprinklers. Uh, all of our A E Ds. Um, we're going through all of that equipment um, every month. Uh, this would be kind of in addition to that. We kind of anticipate it would be two to four hours a month. So um, our crews won't be heavily um. Impacted by it, but um, it, it will take some additional time that we're not spending now.
Julia, how do other municipalities handle um, things like this, especially with their childcare centers? Will they? Are they baking it into their tuition and where? In the, in that? To make sure that there's enough money left over for maintenance into those centers? Are the individual municipalities handling it kind of like this? And I guess where I'm going with this is that. I am fully supportive of taking care of our childcare uh, centers and making sure that they have. Working systems. But if other municipalities are big into the tuition so that the county tuition uh, assistance kind of takes on that. And we're paying thirty two, thirty six percent of it, should we be doing, looking at doing that the same way? Does that, does that make sense?
Well, our childcare tuition assistance goes to the centers to cover the staffing.
I think what he's saying is that if everybody else is having to charge a hundred and twenty dollars a day because they have to cover these expenses. But we only have to cover, we only have to charge ninety dollars a day because the town pays these expenses. I think that's what he's asking about. I do know the answer to that.
Okay. Go for it.
They do, they do all try to get really close. Um, so they have a meeting every month, all of the directors from the whole county. And they try to stay as close as they can for um, with their daily costs. And that's because they really only get reimbursed at the lowest cost. And so if somebody's going wildly above, then when. Then, you know, like anyone who's paying full price, they're getting that. But anyone who's getting tuition assistance only gets at the reimbursed at the lower cost. So they're really trying to stay as close as they can. And so there's not a good answer for how people, I mean, there have been emergency situations that um, ECO has been involved in, having to ask other towns to step in and do some things and county to step in. So. I think what happens is that it just gets put off and put off, which is where. Matt and his team would be so amazing to be in there every month looking to see what needs to be done, you know? But generally, things just get put off until it's like an emergency and then they scrape together, who knows how.
Matt or Julia, we, is there any benefit in looking when you're talking about? An annual subsidy to the centers at looking at uh, how many students are in this center versus that center and prorating out? According to size? The same slice of the pie?
I think, I'll just say from the fifteen thousand, I think it makes sense for them east, each to get the same slice of the pie. And it, there's a, I think the buildings themselves, regardless of how many kids are in there, need to be kept up to. A certain standard. And when things go wrong and they don't have the money to fix it, they're, two of them, we're going to end up fixing it for them anyway. And the other two are going to be trying to find funding. And so I feel like that fifteen thousand dollar amount for maintenance is fairly minimal. To just keep that building up and, and going. And I don't know, Matt, if you feel.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, that comparing the Montessori to the Timberline building uh, is uh, kind of apples and oranges. So. Um, I think the fifteen thousand dollars per center uh, is, is a great start and obviously will be um, reviewed along the way. But um, the buildings themselves are kind of a, the, the animal that we're trying to tackle. Not necessarily the number of kids at each of the buildings. That would be my perspective in facilities maintenance, so.
And I'm assuming those funds would be earmarked so they couldn't get uh, dumped into operating expenses and. If somebody was more efficient, they could save up. For something bigger.
Yeah, that's what we would be checking with them quarterly and then annually, at least quarterly to start with, you know? They're being spent on.
All right, Todd, you want to share your comments?
Yeah, I just think it's super and really forward thinking to whoever kind of came up with the concept and love the idea of. An annual maintenance check of a, a bunch of items and then certainly having capital to just take care of it and. And, and really just get ahead on the maintenance and, you know, much rather have the directors worried about the kids than a leaky roof. And so, yeah, applaud it. Happy to do it from my perspective and. I think it just serves our community really well. So, nice job.
Yeah, and I echo that. I mean, taking a proactive approach, which our facilities department does so well. Um, and bringing that expertise in is, is phenomenal. I think it's great. Love to ratchet that reserve fund up. You know, as needed, not all in one lump sum, but you know.
Comments?
I agree.
All right. So this looks great. Thank you for your work on it and um, councils in support. So let's move forward with that.
Thank you so much.
We're going to take a quick break, five minutes before the Blue River Pathways update.
Are we doing well?
Moving on to Blue River, yes, we're doing perfectly. Welcome ladies. Blue River Pathways update. Tori, I hear this is your show, but Shannon's.
I will do a quick intro. I've been practicing my soft skills, so. Mayor and council, um, we have Norris Design here on behalf of our larger design team for the. For structure project. This is a sub project of the Blue River Pathways. Um, and we're going to give you a brief update on where we're at in conceptual design. And as you can see in the memo, we did have a few um, points where we need council feedback and we'll hit those as we go through the presentation.
All right, I'll take it away. So um, yeah, as Shannon's mentioned, we are giving you guys an update today. We're through conceptual design and we just have a few. Kind of exciting updates or, or little changes that we wanted to just go over with you guys now that we're. Into the nitty gritty with structural engineers and civil engineers and water resource engineers and all the fun things. So I'll dive right in. First, we'd like to just go through, you know, what is our project purpose? Or just building upon the Blue River Pathways master plan and taking that same vision and goals that we establish both with you as well as the community. And just seeking through that, you know, what we're going to do as we move forward. We want to improve the safety and usability and the access to the town's multimodal network. We want to reduce all our vehicle trips and congestion. We want to improve. Vagability, our pedestrian movement and reduce all that vehicle conflict. And we want to improve our community help through the enhancement of our recreation trails and amenities as well as, you know, our river corridor. Um, just as a reminder, we have our funding partners through C dot. This is, you know, through a multimodal transportation and mitigation option fund. And that was originally um, through a regional, or excuse me, a federal grant program. And this project could have the possibility of future grants as well, um, once we go through implementation um. Down the road um, in the, in the future. Below, you see there's a project schedule milestone. So just as we understand that this is kind of a long term project, we're really at the beginning with conceptual design. Next, we'll move into thirty percent design following ninety and a hundred. And as we go through and we dive deeper with more detail. We can get into things like cost and all of those things. But today, we're just highlighting where we are at conceptual design and, and where we think. We're moving forward and where we think we can save money and different opportunities. Just um, as we move through the project, what we'll probably do is we'll, we'll throw, we'll flow through the rest of the presentation, briefly revisiting each segment of um. The master plan that we're focusing through this project. And I'm studying what we talked about the master plan and then. What's changing or what we've discovered through conceptual design for this project. All right, so this is our just overview of the segment between Front Street and Watson. With our proposed pedestrian bridge next to the Breck Connect Gondola, our river engagement, our underpass at Watson Avenue. And our, you know, studying of separation between pedestrian and bikes within this segment. We'll move to the next slide. So just highlighting a couple of opportunities that we found through conceptual, whoa, conceptual design. Well, with our design team is. We absolutely can accomplish a lot of the things within this segment. Some things that we've noticed just in studying grading and widening of some pathways is. We could have the opportunity to possibly remove the stair to save, um, to save some funds. In this location and we are also um, studying the opportunity to possibly relocate the river touchpoint from this location to another location. North um, on the segment and that's really just um, to mitigate some pedestrian and bike conflict. So that's kind of just the highlight changes of what we're looking at here. And this is the point where we kind of need council input.
So in this item, we are looking for feedback on removing those stairs and relocating the touchpoint as Tori. Ment and this would be cost savings for both installation of those stairs as well as ongoing maintenance. I have some concerns of winter maintenance and the usability of those stairs. And then studying that river touchpoint. There could be some unintended conflicts between pedestrians and bikes that are cruising to get under that underpass. So we're reconsidering um, that location and we wanted to get council input on those two items.
How do people feel about that? In agreement with staff suggestion?
I, I like thinking critically about the pragmatic way forward and not just uh, it's less pie in the sky and more of like. Okay, taking thoughts and actually seeing what the realistic implications are for it. So I'm, I'm appreciative that those were brought forward.
Everybody else all right? Any other comments? Yeah. Okay.
Another opportunity that was just brought up when we were on site is that even the bridge in this location is a great river engagement point, just being in the middle of that bridge. So. We felt like relocating, it is not really losing a river engagement opportunity. All right, and this is our segment between Watson and Ski Hill Road. And this is kind of our sawmill lot engagement area. The pedestrian promenade is off of this segment, but we're really studying just the rec path and the river corridor here. And the crossing at Ski Hill Road, whether that is a underpass or is a at grade crossing. So we'll get to that next. All right, so I'll just highlight some of the changes or exciting opportunities that we've studied or things that we've confirmed, which is really great. So moving kind of from left to right, we shifted the first like pedestrian bridge closest to Watson over a little bit. And the reason for that is to make sure that we're gaining that ADA connection. So we're making sure that we're keeping those grades under five percent. So not only are we ADA compliant, but we're also not going too fast into that underpass. So we're making sure that we're keeping our way safe as well as under compliance. So that was shifted over a little bit for that reason. We're um, because of that shift, we're studying a possible river touchpoint relocation to the other side of that bridge. And what's really awesome about that opportunity is while we're on site, is the view from that location is actually amazing. And it circumnavigates the block of the parking garage. So you actually get a better view of the mountain from that location than the previous location that we had showed. So the movement of that bridge actually is a bonus um, from, from the design team's perspective. And then moving down towards the right, um, we are setting the trail and alignment to help mitigate some steep slopes. What we've discovered or what the design team is studying is that we do think that we could possibly actually. Accomplish an underpass at Ski Hill Road. The culvert will have to be replaced at Ski Hill Road at some time. It will. So we're like, okay, now that we definitely know that, is there a possibility to accomplish the underpass at the same time? So that we're not paying for both a culvert and a cantilever. And so they, they were studying that and we do think it's possible. There's a couple of things we're looking at to make sure that we're also mitigating the slopes on the opposite side of the river, as we know, next to the professional building, which is already steep. So we're looking at that as well as the effects onto the Schoonover lot. So we're looking at how we can adjust some trail alignment together and um, make that as both beautiful and also economical as possible. But it is really exciting that we think that we can have an underpass and also get rid of that surface crossing in the mid block because as we all know. That tends to be a little bit of a vehicular pedestrian and bike conflict area. So those are kind of the main highlights for this segment of um, changes.
What's left in the life of that culvert, you think? Do you have any idea?
I don't think I could give that opinion, but it's definitely one of the next of our big culvert replacements.
Within ten years or?
Yeah, ten to fifteen probably. So the decision point for council is supporting that underpass in lieu of the cantilever um, section. Is the big one we're looking feedback.
Project will be more fun than Warriors Mark.
Yeah, it's going to be amazing to close Ski Hill Road for a few months. But we do think it's a great opportunity for, from the safety standpoint alone, getting that at grade crossing eliminated. Is advantageous and really has strong support from staff.
Budget wise, the timing might be right too.
Definitely.
Okay.
Do you ever worry about the usage of underpasses of like? What is the utilization rate on if there's an underpass where uh, pets have the option of using that or just playing Frogger across the street? What, like, is it effective?
I think that it's all about, you know, how it's designed and it absolutely can be effective. I think that it's all about, you know, how open it feels, whether it's well designed. Lighting, I think that um, I've always seen it more well used when it's incorporating public art. That's a great way to get people to use an underpass like that. I think that the fact that it's next door river is always helpful. It's not just an underpass that's just dark with nothing around you. So um, I think that it also depends on the context. So we have some images at the end of this presentation with underpasses that are next to rivers that I think can be helpful to kind of. Idea of what that could feel like and what that could look like. But yeah, it's, it's less of a, you know, when you think of underpass, I think a lot of people think of pedestrian underpasses that are just under a road. With nothing next to them and that is a completely different feel, I think. But I think if we really try to come at it in the correct way. And think about this from a pedestrian scale, not just like I'm flying through here with a bike. I think we could definitely accomplish it. I think that we also need to think about how. Pedestrians are already kind of confused at this location and already, you know, are the traffic conflict at this location is already kind of an issue. So if we can mitigate that, I think it's a win. And if they do not want to use the underpass, there are other options. Obviously, if you're coming from Blue River Plaza, for example, and you're not going to use the other pass, you still. Have the pathway through the alley that we're still going to keep open. You obviously can get to, to Main Street from the sidewalk there or from Blue River Plaza. I mean, there's, there's other opportunities. It's not like we're not going to have any. Surface opportunity. It's just that this is a safe, connected, easy opportunity. And this also is at that five percent. ADA compliant slope as well. So um, it's also an easy slope. It's not something that's bearing to be very steep like some of our under, other underpasses.
Your user groups, the people that know, I mean, the people that are commuting and trying to connect through are always going to use the underpass. You know, the people that know about it. And that, you know, our main goal to connect bikes all the way through town without having to dismount, that's a user group that will continuously use an underpass. The tourists that just got here that don't know what they're doing are probably likely going to have to find the underpass. So that's why there's also the we finding component as part of this. There's an educational component that comes along with it. But when you're thinking about exiting the parking garage or maybe getting on an e-bike at. The Schoonover Plaza and then you can see, oh, underpass here and I'm trying to get to this location. That's part of the reason to have that bike plaza in this location as well as one of those things that we were thinking about. And how to help educate people and guide them safely through town on a bicycle.
Yeah, good, totally good point. Actually, I think the fact that Schoonover Park right next to this underpass is a huge opportunity for you guys because we have the opportunity to celebrate this underpass. And have a great opportunity for pedestrians to see it and also um, to easily. um, to easily wayfind it and get on their bike or just even walk it because this underpass is wide enough for both pedestrians and bikes. It's not going to be narrowed.
I think it's possible because I never would have believed that people would get out of the Eric's, um, alleyway. And the number of people that use the sidewalk now is like exponentially changed.
I mean, it's amazing how many people are like, I just want to use the fastest route. And this will be the fastest route.
No, that helps too. Support everyone else that generally good. Jay, you're, you're good? You want more cars, do you?
Thanks for incorporating the river touchpoints. I think those are super value to kind of just valuable to, you know, for the engagement of the community. And you see how busy it gets by the River Walk and just given other opportunities to kind of connect with the river in each of the blocks is really thoughtful. Um, I'm supportive of the underpasses as well. It'll be interesting on that, just trying to continually make that connection from, um, the parking garage to the gondola better. And just how do you make it more efficient for cars to get through and pedestrians to get through at the same time? So good work. I like it.
Both directions from the parking garage, connection to town and the connection to the gondola.
No, absolutely. That's a really good point, Dick. And I think that something else that can be part of this project is as we study the replacement of that culvert and this underpass is, you know, the widening of that bridge and that sidewalk connection from, you know, even if they go through the, the Paseo or whatever we want to call it between the professional building and Town Hall, if they go that direction to get them from here to Main Street, that's another thing that could be accomplished through this project too.
Yeah, it's actually three directions because they could go straight across or they could south and go to Ski Hill or go to the gondola.
This is definitely one of your critical segments. It's got a lot of movement through it. I think there's, I think there's one more slide actually, or one more segment. But it's, it's mostly this, this main thing. So this is kind of the previous, what it looked like. And we can go to the next slide. But then this is kind of where you guys can see the change from the underpass and kind of the efficiency of that. And then just, you know, next time when we come and see you guys, we'll, we'll have updates on what the plaza that's currently there, the change in that design and, and kind of like studying, um, any other alterations, um, in response to, you know, the new engineering designs. But basically what we're going to try to do is we're going to try to save as many mature trees as possible, trying to keep the grades very similar so that we're not building too many walls, trying to keep those trees alive and in place since they're so beautiful and so mature. We don't want to lose them. And then we're also studying the wall to improve the access and the alignment on the other side of the river. So on the west side of the river. So we're getting, um, more survey of that side to see if that we can wind in that access as well. So that, um, that pedestrian movement up the river or to the north feels very, um, inviting and engaging so that we're making sure everybody's moving on both sides of the river. Questions?
Any questions?
All right. Well, thank you.
I do.
Oh, you do?
If, I mean, it's actually, this has actually nothing to do with your presentation and I loved everything. Okay. There are some places along the river where it just looks like if we could just get some like bench management tightening up in there. Is there anything we can do? Because some of these are very long-term projects and it feels like, um, is there anything we can do before we do some of these big projects or?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yes, we will prioritize that. Right now we have the wetlands delineation getting wrapped up by the consulting team. So we'll use that to inform us on some vegetation management.
Great.
Have we studied the erosion of that steep embankment on the, right there at Ski Hill, you know, in the professional building? Is that eroding? Does that become in a crisis situation?
We are just engaging the structural engineer to look at it. Um, I'll be able to update you in the coming weeks on that.
Can't wait.
Taking comments at this point and questions, I really think that this is a good way to look at this project. You pointed out a lot of more easily accomplished benefits along the way. And I, I think Kelly's absolutely right. Just cleaning up along the river there will be a great difference in opening it up and creating touchpoints that will sort of organically happen, I think, as the river gets cleaned up a little bit. Uh, and I promote putting that at the kind of top of the list as you're working your way up and down the corridor.
I appreciate that feedback as we're working on the CIP, that to council later this fall.
Really set that up nice. Are you two together?
Can't wait for that either.
Any other comments? Okay. Well, thank you very much. We're excited about this.
Thank you.
Okay. Where are we? Planning matters? Oh yeah. McCain Open Space Plan Discussion. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Start with that. All right.
Welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. Um, my name's Craig Carn. I'm Director of Design with THK Associates. And we are just in the very beginning stages of, uh, creating a concept for development of the McCain Open Space. Um, Sam Spicer is my, my landscape designer and project manager on the project. And he'll be a part of this presentation. We'll try to keep it as brief as we can. You've, uh, very interesting agenda and fun things, but very long day for you all. Uh, so I'll try to get through it quickly and then we get back into any kind of discussion and give it all the time that you'd like to do so. So again, we're in the very beginning stages. We've been, we're doing site analysis. Um, we've had an initial site visit with the team and then Sam and I were actually back out there a little bit earlier today since the, uh, traffic and blasting delays didn't catch us today. So we had a little time. Um, we've done, uh, we'll start out, I see with, uh, we have some precedent images and these are very, these are really the kind of first step. And even that process, they're, you know, they're great images to just facilitate discussion and help people visualize opportunities. Uh, they don't, they aren't intended to represent any kind of final design, you know, by any stretch of the imagination, but they are to, uh, to inspire creativity and thoughts about the project. Uh, you can see we have, um, some interesting imagery of, you know, about the history of dredge mining. That's been such an important part of, you know, kind of why we're here today with this space and the history of the site. Um, and just some of those images is to kind of drive that opportunities to interpret and tell that story about the site. And then, and we had a little broader discussion with the Open Space Advisory Commission about that. And even, uh, thinking, uh, earlier beyond and, and how indigenous peoples and how, how this whole space existed pre-mining, not just that impact that we're really kind of, kind of re-preparing even to this day. Uh, so go on to the next panel. Lots of opportunities, we think as a, you know, and the, uh, the, the, uh, Open Space Master Plan, you know, really gives us a lot of guidance. In fact, I'm going to step back to that and talk about a couple of key points that, that we take from that and will drive the whole process. So I don't forget about that. There you go. Really, there were four strategic goals in that plan. I'm just going to touch on real quick. And Jay, you know them very well since you're a member of the, of that committee. Um, conservation, recreation, access and inclusion and stewardship are all the four keystones of that. We have a great opportunity and we, we really in our, in our scope of service, you know, really, really hit on that and intend to touch on each of those. I think access and inclusion, uh, in some of your earlier presentations, you're making great efforts at that, you know, through, through a lot of different things that you're doing as a community. A real great opportunity here. Uh, as a front country, open space presents us a lot of opportunities, uh, to provide access to open space that, you know, for people of all different life stages and physical abilities and disabilities that that may be. Uh, so that'll be a big part of it as well because it gives us that opportunity to try to give people an open space experience, uh, when they may not be able to get back into, you know, backcountry and those kinds of things. Uh, so that's really important as well. Um, we have, uh, actually some, uh, engagement meetings coming up early next week with, with neighbors and other people out near the site. Looking forward to that. And as we move through this process, um, you know, at the end of that, we'll be creating and making recommendations for a, a, a management plan and which is really a stewardship plan. And, and spaces like this is really important to, as we go through this process, to see how we can get your, get the citizens to understand what the importance of stewardship and the ongoing, uh, you know, uh, taking care of these places. Uh, this doesn't stop with our concept design or even future design development and construction. Uh, it's a, it's a living, breathing thing out there. And so I think stewardship is a really vital part of it. That will be the end of the process. So I didn't want to miss that. Um, uh, let's go on through the panel. So again, opportunities, can we go back to the, that one last panel real quick? A lot of these, the one in the, that says 3D model, what's really interesting about that, that's an example that was of, 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 of an interpretive panel that was created, uh, for the visually impaired. So they, they can feel there's braille on there and then they can feel the structures and kind of understand what it's saying, uh, without being able to see it. Um, uh, these panels can be very artistic. Those ones up on the left are really great and they're high visibility and can be very appropriate for that open space setting. Uh, some of the other small signs are really important to, uh, help people understand how we want to, this will, this, this site will get a lot of use being a front country site. And so it's really important to, again, inform people, uh, you know, please stay on the trails and, and those kinds of things. Um, those are important to integrate into the plan. Again, it's really even a part of that stewardship, which is long-term, long-term viability of the space. Next panel, fine. Uh, we're, you know, we're beginning to think about, you know, what kind of landscape should this be and what should it look like? All those kinds of things, you know, uh, using indigenous and native plant materials wherever can, wherever we can. But how do we make this a, a, a more inviting and more biologically diverse space? Um, you know, the impacts of mining and even, you know, improvements of the river and that, we need to think about how we can, uh, get back to a more regenerative landscape that really takes care of itself and reestablish that regenerative natural system. Next panel, please. These are just some images to start thinking about the look and live of the place. Um, one of the things that's important to, to, to our firm and myself in particular is how, how we can, all the different ways that we can capture and use rainfall and other sources of water from the site that may in fact not be from the river. Uh, one good example is, and you can see in the image on the lower right, is simple things like taking water from paved surfaces like McCain Road that's already out there. And rather than running it all the way down in a curb and gutter into a, into a catch basin and dumping it into a tension pond, we think there's opportunities to use that water along that very public edge to make the landscape perform better and take advantage of that water and really create a, a stronger edge along the street. The other images are really just to show that we really, uh, and I'll go back to one more of that curb cut and dry drainage channel. Those are the kind of things we can do to actually, you know, carry that, some of that water back into the space and really enhance that edge. Um, but overall, I think, you know, and again, this may be some of my, my pre-conceived ideas slipping in, uh, but, uh, really, uh, keeping it as a very open space. Uh, as a landscape architect who's done this a long time, uh, there's a, there's a real inclination to put, want to put all the latest things into every park and open space that we improve. And I think in particular with this, it'll be really important to be cognizant of that as we engage with neighbors and other citizens about what should, what should be here. Uh, so remember that its function is as open space. Uh, you all have great recreation facilities and, uh, plans for, you know, future improvements, um, to really talk about what's the best way to, to see this and improve this space for the future. So these images just help us kind of think about that and help, to help when we do engagement with neighbors and yourselves, what should that really look like? Next panel, please.
Yeah.
Um, oh, there you go. Okay. So these are just, again, further just kind of examples of, of, you know, different types of trails and improvements and things, uh, that can be important out there. Hierarchies of trails. What kind of trails should this be, given that we have a great commuter trail along the roadway already that provides access to the site? Um, but we don't necessarily want to, you know, we, we talked about, uh, the, the last presentation that the groups at North did actually about the issues you have with trail corridors, especially in, you know, this front country condition where there'll be a lot more users, uh, pedestrian and bicycle conflicts, things like that. Uh, those conflicts between different trail users, uh, pedestrians, bicyclists, mom in a baby stroller, grandma and a little one. I have to think about all of those and how we can provide for all of them, but avoid those pretty typical conflicts. Um, and also just how, how can we protect this environment when they're out there? Uh, we don't want to have a, a whole plethora of social trails running all over the place. We're going to get some of them, but through management and through design, we can kind of direct where they happen and try to, uh, you know, manage that. Um, uh, one, that image up in the upper right, uh, you know, the, a surface boardwalk, that's actually, you know, I, I'm originally from Michigan long, long ago. And, and that place is kind of close to my heart as it was an old sand mine that was restored, uh, back into a park along the shores of Lake Michigan. That boardwalk was created, uh, to keep people from impacting a very sensitive environment that a lot of effort was put in to restore. So in critical places like that, we need to think about how we can keep people on trails and man, design the trails to do that. Uh, another favorite of these of mine in the lower right-hand corner, that's actually from very northern Scotland up in the Orkney Islands. Um, again, about, uh, part of, you know, how we can better use water, uh, and how we can have a better environment out there is minimizing how much hard paving impervious surface we really need in the park at all. Uh, that's, that, that's a very heavily used trail at some very important, uh, archaeological sites up there. And, uh, it's no concrete at all. It's just, it's a fabric grid and, and stone surfacing that, uh, you know, the vegetation, if there's more limited traffic, the vegetation grows, you get heavier traffic. It, it still provides that support service and can be an emergency access service as well. So I'm, I drag on too long. Next panel, please.
Fabric on the right, lower right?
It's a, it's a plastic, uh, polymer fabric that's interfilled with gravel. So it holds, helps to hold it in place and keep it rigid, but it's an, it's a pervious surface. So you don't create runoff. Um, this is the, just a map of the existing conditions, uh, that are out there. Our site is labeled there. You can see that. Uh, so this is really just what we've really begun with. Um, it's interesting to, you know, coming up next is discussion about the potential for parking at the school site. I think it's a pretty, pretty, uh, opportune time if you need to address that, to think about that while we're doing this work, because I think it can be an opportunity to see how that gets, uh, as best as that can be integrated into this open space environment. Uh, there's plenty of room out there. I think we should just, you know, pay attention to that as it, it fits in. And, uh, we'll see how that progresses with you and, and would love to address that as well. Cause I think that's a real opportunity, given the timing that there happened right now. Uh, next slide, please. We've, we've put in some series of, uh, analysis maps that'll guide our design process and, and the, uh, you know, outreach that we'll be doing all, all along the way. Of course, very important here, uh, is, is the floodplain and the drainage implications on the site. Uh, so that'll be a big part of how we address design as we move through the design process. Next slide. Views are really critical because there's just such great view opportunities out here. Again, you know, open space is a lot of the things. In this case, it truly is a very open space. Fantastic panoramic views of the ski area and the mountains and up and down the valley, especially when you get a walkout into this site. So whatever we do, it'll be important to be aware of those and actually enhance opportunities and make sure that we don't do things that inadvertently corrupt any of those views. Uh, we'll be looking at this further. You know, like I said, Sam and I were out there earlier today. Every time we go out there, we discover new things. And so, uh, you'll see this getting updated. Next slide.
And then, um, could you go one more as well?
Yeah, we will come back.
So these are those views, um, that associate with that previous map. They got a little bit out of order in the presentation, but just so that you guys have a chance to sort of see what we're talking about here. Um, a lot of these opportunities, um, that were outlined are incredible view sheds, um, that we want to preserve as much as possible. And that's part of, um, the efforts with keeping this as open as we can as well to preserve these places as it is one of the best places in town to get a panoramic view of the mountains. Um, the following slide is just the other four images. So now we can go back.
Yeah, if you go back to that opportunity, this is an evolving graphic. This is our opportunities map. And what, what, what an opportunities map is, it's not designed. It's just to present opportunities that, for things that can be considered as we move through the design process. It's kind of an initial, what, take all these different analysis maps and, and, and really, uh, synergize it into kind of one, one guiding document that we can look at and, uh, take advantage of. Cause there are a lot of opportunities out there. Um, as you can see with this graphic, I think one of the biggest opportunities is to preserve much of that as an open space meadow for the view sheds. Um, our environmental consultants with ERO, uh, have been out there on site as well. And we're going to talk to them about, um, you know, the, the, like elk that we know elk and deer that find their way into this site. There may be even things with that meadow we can do. There may be even things with that meadow we can do to encourage that, because what a great opportunity for people to, you know, see that wildlife in a in a front country condition. Other things is that, again, as Sam noted, most of those views and the best views are out when you're really out there near the river. And so you can see we, these three nodes we've kind of shown feature areas. We don't have any idea yet what those might be. But there's an opportunity there, again, for views. Those those locations that are inside the, you know, inside the curve of the river, the 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 point banks that are easier to access the water on the inside of those bends. And so there's an opportunity to to do different things with how we do or don't improve those areas, but provide access to them. Again, thinking about how we can, if we give people good, good opportunities for access and views, that'll help to minimize the social trails if we give them places that we can guide them to out there. Other things that are opportunities, again, I kind of talked about it with some of the precedent images, you can see along McCain Road, you know, taking the opportunity for that to be more than just the pasture coming up to the edge of the street. Capture water off the roadway and even water off the site and use that to create a more enhanced landscape along that streetscape. Because one of the things we think, again, other views that are important, not only from the site, but how people preserve this site from Highway nine, from the trails, all those different things. How do people identify that? You know, we had some discussion when we when we talked with the Open Space Advisory Commission about about that very much and and that this is a opportunity for really a very iconic and landmark space that really can also start to, you know, create a lot of identity and 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 really kind of a landmark location for Brackenridge. So we've suggested opportunities, as you can see, for artful form that may be integrated along that space, along the edge of the street that will really draw your eye into it, landform and the like, to make that a much, much more impactful look from the from the street and from and from the highway as well. Also, those views as you arrive on McCain Road or on the associated trails from the north or south, that you get that opportunity to really have that long extended view across the space. So those are all all things we're exploring right now and things that we'll look at as we move through the design process are what types of trails are appropriate, what types of surfacing, what we can do to minimize bringing any more impervious surface than we absolutely feel is, you know, we need to to develop the space. Sam, is there anything else we should add? Or should we, I think we could open up to comment?
We have three additional slides that we'll go through really quickly here, and they are just pertaining to the engagement process that our partners CDR are taking on for us. They're also the leads of our public engagement meetings, which we have three scheduled, the one we mentioned previously. But really, for the overview here, our engagement plan works on a foundation of mutual education and information sharing. And we want to make sure that all the groups are informed of the context and history in order to engage everyone meaningfully. The plan includes touch points for broad community engagement, direct neighbor engagement, interest groups, land managers, as well as decision makers such as yourselves. And the how is a mix of digital and in person opportunities where they're developing a story map, which is some sort of a, you know, it's an interactive mapping software where people can sort of put pins on the map and talk about certain things and it's accessed by everyone. So there's a way for everyone to sort of engage and have feedback on what they'd like to see. And we'll use all of that information and compile it together to sort of inform the design process going forward. If you could go to the next slide. Our engagement aligns with project milestones. And so we have three of those. Phase one is what we're in right now, which is we're gathering input envisioning information and desires. In phase two, we will sort of gather feedback on the design concepts that we developed based off of that first round of feedback. And then in phase three, we'll report back to the decision makers, you know, yourselves at Town Council, BOSAC, et cetera. And sort of talk about how those things shaped the final design. And basically, the outline for this is that we'll have BOSAC meetings first in each phase, and then we'll meet with you all. And then we will have our community workshops. And then we'll have ongoing communication in each of these phases, such as the story map, the poll surveys, digital communications. We're also trying to get physical publications out there. We've talked to multiple organizations around town to help us with that as well. Yeah. And then in phase three, it's the same, BOSAC Presentation Planning Commission as well, we're planning on speaking to at that point in time, because we'll have a more robust, refined design concept. We'd like to get everyone sort of final feedback at that point, and that's what we'll take forward to our final design and inevitably develop the final report and management plan for. So this was just sort of the general overview of the three phases, and those align with our projects sort of steps as well. So yeah, and then I think the last slide is just a list of our stakeholders that we've compiled so far. And we actually added to this list. There we go. We added to this list after our BOSAC meeting with some additional suggestions on people we might reach out to. It's kind of a robust list of people that we'd like to engage with over the course of this project. And we sort of have built this up with help from Open Space and Trails with Duke and Alex, as well as BOSAC with their suggestions they provided last week. So this list is ever growing. And it's a large collection of pretty much all of the interest groups, neighboring managers, you know, residents themselves, representatives, et cetera. And so this is just a good sort of outline of all of that. But that's all that we had for you guys today in our presentation. So any comments or questions?
Thank you very much. Comments, questions?
Can you talk in the first phase of outreach, there's the community visioning. Can you talk about a little bit about what that looks like?
Yeah, so I know that the community visioning is really sort of our step to get out and interface with the direct neighbors specifically, where we're hosting those meetings specifically. I know our first meeting is actually at Vista Verde, which is the adjoining residential parcels. And I think that's really important and meaningful because they are a directly impacted by whatever gets built out here, but also some of the more, I I have a feeling will be some of the more of the users on the space is that this is something that will be in their backyard and accessible. And so we really wanted to get the feedback from the adjacent neighbors. Also, because with the Open Space and Trails Master Plan that was developed recently, there was a lot of that more high level engagement. And so we wanted to focus in on the user groups we thought would be impacted the most while still trying to capture everyone else as well, which is why we have so many of those ongoing opportunities throughout the course of the project. And also, these public meetings are getting published various places. We're handing out flyers, we're posting information about it. So anyone is welcome at those. But they are targeted at those neighbors that are specifically adjacent. We'll be providing translation services at those as well. Our CDR, our partners, they have people that they work with to do direct translation. And also all of the materials that we've been producing thus far that pertain to the public engagement are bilingual, they have been translated. So we have both English and Spanish versions of all of those flyers and information. So we're really trying to cast the net as wide as we can and get the more detailed information from the people who will be most significantly impacted by the site.
Yeah, that's great. And I think that is key to shaping this plan. A note for, I think, us internally as a town, we have not really yet formally engaged Vista Verde, so I know there's benefit to having this engagement be specific on this. But I think it would be a missed opportunity if we don't have a town presence, so residents can bring up other community town questions they have. But I really appreciate your approach. Thank you.
Yeah. And just a little note, we did have CDR in town recently. They were trying to get all of that sort of figured out. And our our friends were approached multiple times by residents that are there already asking about the adjacent parcels, specifically even the parking area, the school site, as well as the open space itself. And so the people are paying attention, they are aware. And so we're really looking forward to hearing what all of the feedback and opinions and thoughts are of sort of the whole space as a whole.
And they're already using the site. We found that today as we went down the apartments that they're already engaging. So good time to move this plan forward.
I was looking at your list of people that you were engaging with, and I couldn't read it all fast enough. The Silver Shekel neighborhood, which is on the ridge east of the highway, looking down over that. We had a lot of input when we first started talking about moving the parking out to McCain. And number one, if you go up to the main road through Silver Shekel, you get a great view down on the whole project. And number two, there's some people there that are going to want to be engaged.
Well, they have a board of directors.
That's really helpful information. It also makes a lot of sense, given that that is sort of, you know, if you live up there, that's your backyard too, to some extent, and what you're seeing out there, you know. So we'll definitely be sure to get, reach out to them.
Great, thanks.
I liked your your view angles. I had, this might be more for us than for than you guys, but wondering why photo two doesn't look more like three and four in terms of rebadge? Are we, so that's more of an internal?
I I tell you what, the the grasses, even in the most recent improvements out there are doing really well. Those pictures are about, what, three, three or four?
Yeah, that was from back out in May when we came up.
It's the grasses are actually doing pretty well. The western wheatgrass are doing real well out there. So that was just, it was still a little bit early. It was good, good spring sunshine, but the grasses hadn't really perked up yet. So. And there are some areas that just have had different levels of improvement still. And I think we'll we'll be looking at all that as we move forward.
Great. I had a couple of thoughts. Are we into comments or?
Comments? Good. Go for it.
I I love hearing you say to keep it a true open space. It's it's one of the more spectacular parcels in town, really, I think. And and it's so important to us as a gateway to town. You know, it helps us break up which what some of our community members feel is becoming sprawl from town out there. And it's, it's, I'm really glad that this group a few years ago put it in and protected it in our open space, because there's a ton of pressure to use this land. You know, our poor Public Works Department just keeps getting shoved out of everywhere. And they they have a lot of things they need to do. We store a lot of snow and and they have a lot of equipment and do a lot of things. So so I'm really glad to hear you. You're viewing it as a true open space. When you talk about stewardship, our Breckenridge Tourism Office has a big stewardship campaign called Be Like Breck. Might be something worth taking a look.
Oh, we will. Absolutely.
Yeah, and and the proximity of the workhorse houses. So hearing you that, hearing that you want to do some of your engagement at Vista Verde is huge.
Well, so one of the things we talked about is I'm really looking forward to meeting some of the neighbors out there in particular. And again, I've been practicing landscape graphics for a long time and doing a lot of community scale master planning and all that level of design as well. It it is very common that when we create spaces within a development plan or a space like this, that the community sees it as an opportunity to put all the things that they wish they had. How many, how many potatoes can we put in that bag kind of thing? And it'll be really important to address that. And there's often ways we can do that, but in a different fashion, given that it's an open space. And one of the things that that we're exploring and doing a lot more at THK now actually is in terms of play, right? I'm sure, well, you know, there'll be, there's probably a lot of young families that live in that apartment community. And I won't be surprised if we don't hear, can you build a big play structure? We like to take an approach, and we're doing it actually on a really fun project in Thornton right now. It's about, it's about discovery play. And it's also about, we we tend to, in modern culture, want to structure all of our kids' time. Well, structured play as in play structures. Well, discovery play can be, what can you find out there in that open space as a kid? And we do things with subtle landforms and fun, fun things that can be found. You can have just as much fun out in a big meadow as you can on a play structure. And how can we make that an inviting inviting space for for kids? And and for when grandma wants to take them out there and all those kinds of things. So that's really important, you know, when Central Park was first created as one of our great public spaces, Frederick Olmsted spent much of the rest of his career defending that space, because it's real easy to want to, even in Washington Park, where I live nearby in Denver. The fire station 21, that's great and provides a vital service for us, but it was an encroachment on the park. They cut a corner of the park out to build that. And so you have to constantly, especially with great open spaces, defend them from other, you know, things like that.
Just a lot of pressure to utilize.
As to use the space for other other things. So that'll be an important part of what we learned through the outreach too, to try to, how can we best manage that, meet a lot of those needs, but not in the same fashion as we might normally do. Any other comments or questions? This is fun.
Hope you're able to stay for our next discussion, because it might inform some of the challenges.
I, we were planning on it when we saw that, because we just became aware of it ourselves. And I I firmly believe as a landscape architect that there's ways we can find, fit this all together and make it work better together. It might mean it might be the way you do that parking lot that's different than you've conventionally done it in the past. Or even how you integrate snow stories with how that thing works, because, you know, I'm, I grew up in western Michigan on the shores of Lake Michigan. And while it's not real mountains there, well, there's there's some sand dunes that are like mountains to most people. But there's plenty of snow, and they face the same challenge there of where do you put it all in the winter time? And so I certainly appreciate that. But that also means you can find very creative ways to to manage that snow and have it have it not be impactful on the environment and be purposeful. Maybe that, maybe that snowstorm is what screens the parking lot from the neighbors up on the hill on the other side of the street. We'll look at all that. It'll be, I think this will be a fun part of the design development. Thank you.
Thanks for the wonderful start. Look forward to seeing what you.
This is exciting, fun stuff.
I agree.
Well, and Steve covered my comment, so thank you.
If you think of anything later, certainly you can send us emails or reach out to CDR or Duke and we'll hear about it. Because the engagement, the engagement is never ending. You're never quite done. We may call it done here in a little while, but it'll be an ongoing process.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll we'll stay for the subsequent discussion.
Thing overflow skier parking location.
I'll come. Julie and James are coming down. So for you that provide some of the detail of how we got to where we are today, that includes some information also on the parking agreements that we have in place with the ski area. And how we made the decision to, or that we made the decision to move overflow parking to McCain Parcel. We, I know you all recall, we talked about and did a site visit out to McCain Parcel to look at an area on the east side of the roadway that we thought would work for about 350 vehicles. We've had several conversations with the ski area, and I provided you with a letter from John Copeland, who was here today, that includes the request from the ski area that we keep the parking number, overflow parking number at 500. And for anyone in the public, we have a couple of printed copies of that letter up on the table since it wasn't included in the packet. I wanted to share with you some additional data on the current, you know, on the current status of parking. So right now, because, you know, block 11 is just a dirt expanse. You know, they can fit probably 1100 ish cars on there if they have to. And on the very busiest of days, so think snow sculpture, powder day, where the highway stays open, we end up needing to use the entirety of that parking lot and then overflow into CMC with their permission in order to park everyone who wants to be in Breckenridge on a day like that. So this past season, the block 11 or the ski area parked on block 11, over 500 cars on 14 of the days of the season. And over 1,000 cars on two days out of the season. So with kind of understanding, sometimes there's a need to park that many cars. And kind of what, you know, part of the season looks like for the over 500 cars and what our capacity is there. If we were to provide 500 spaces on McCain and the MOU that the ski area is working out with CMC provides another 240, that gets us to 740, which is still significantly less than what we're able to park. Which we all know, we want people out of cars, we want people carpooling, taking snow staying and busting and using other our own free ride, other methods of getting to the ski area. So I'm not in any way suggesting that we should be, you know, building the church for Easter Sunday, you know. You know, building the church for Easter Sunday, you know, for lack of a better analogy. But just laying out what we have today versus but, versus what we will have in the future. And the other thing that I think may have been in the memo, but I want to make sure I point out is. That I have been talking with John and he is putting together a term sheet and we will be renegotiating. Our current parking agreement. Um, if we move parking or as we move parking out to McCain. We will also be doing a new parking lease. So there are a lot of pieces in the mix. And I think, um, another. It's just going to be a complicated process because over the years. We've entered into many agreements with Skiria that speaks to other agreements. And so. You know, I've talked to Keely and we're going to need to look at all of the agreements and see what needs to be changed through this process. But we all know that the existing parking agreement is very old and out of date. Doesn't accurately reflect the names of the lot, the number of cars that are parking in the lots. And there's a real need to. Look at that and determine what those numbers should be. What are they accurately represented today? And then what should this all look like as we go forward? So the, just a, you know, a piece to keep in the back of your mind as you're thinking about this recommendation today. Um, and I also want to say that the timing for that, it's, as I mentioned, the complexity of it, it's going to take a bit of time for us. To work through all the details of that. And we do need a place to park this, the overflow this season. So I don't think we can wait for the parking agreement to be redone to determine. How we want to do the, the overflow parking. Um, and with that in mind, what we have presented to you today. Is not a permanent installation. I know the, the cost is about three hundred thousand dollars. That is, um, a reclaimed asphalt. So it's not a permanent parking area. Um, you know, wouldn't necessarily meet with the planning department would ask us to do. And so it gives us also the opportunity to consider as we move forward, whether or not we need. I'm not going to start again. I can. Thought I was talking loud and guess not. Um, so we have the opportunity to change that space. Um, or maybe working with the folks who are working on the McCain open space. We come up with something that, that people really like. But I just want to point out, it's not permanent and we have the opportunity to, um, work with the Skiria to change it going forward. Um, so I think I will stop my comments now. I don't know if Julia and, oh, one other thing I want to mention. I'm sorry, there was a lot, um, to talk about and I, and we mentioned this in the memo. Currently on the east side of McCain, Public Works has some of their storage. And those are things to Dick's earlier point that have been, had to be moved off of Stillson. So we've kind of keep. Jumping their stuff from spot to spot to spot. Um, and our recommendation for keeping the parking. Or putting the parking on the school district parcel. Feel like I can hear myself echoing in my head. Um, it is in part because we do believe that on the east side of the road, we're able to better. Shield those uses from view, at least from the highway and, and maybe from above a little as well. And those are, um, three hundred sixty-five day a year uses. So. You know, at some point, if you, if you decide you want to do the five hundred, but at some point down the road, we cut it back. We could put parking there, but then you have, we still need space for the public works uses, which. Might end up on the west side of the road and might not be as attractive up against the open space. Year round as, um, not that parking is necessarily attractive, but having parking, um, for half of the year. So now I will stop and see if Julia, James have anything they want to add.
He covered it.
And do you have any questions for us?
Parking that we looked at in section 12A a few months ago, what's envisioned to go there?
So that's where Public Works has, I think, five or six Conex boxes and other public work storage.
And that's related to kind of that conversation on the screening that you were having.
Correct.
How many spots do we have? Cause that, that, that's where that other parking zone was, right? And that kind of little U there that pops out. How many spots was that?
Three fifty.
Three fifty. And did we look at additional spots to the east of the McCain access road? And to the south as we contemplate getting to the five hundred?
Yeah. So part of the reason why we, it, it ended up where it is on the. On that U piece is because we were avoiding having to remove any of the tailings. And the other benefit, you know, at that point to being in the U area was it provided a little bit more, um, distance for cars to queue. To get out onto Coin Valley. Cause that was one of the concerns when we originally talked, we were farther to the south. And there's not much distance to queue. And we know that Coin Valley backs up.
Thank you.
Maybe questions or just confirmation. So we're not talking, and I'm thinking some from the Silver Shekel impacts on. That neighborhood. We're not planning to light this parking lot and obviously not pave it as you already said. Uh, in, in porta potties or can we do some kind of? Maybe a compost that's removable or something that's a little nicer than porta potties or do we know? I mean, that might be too much detail.
Yeah, we would. I mean, I think if that's something that you wanted, we could look into it. I do believe the Skiria puts out portos in the winter time. So at the very minimum, it would be that. And if you wanted something different, we could.
And a shelter of some kind for bus. Is, is there any opportunity, James? Well, two questions for, for Public Works. Um. How much construction staging space and stuff? And part of the context of this question is, um. Parcel 12B, which is adjacent to the open space. Um. I mean, I think snow storage is obviously you need it. It's gotta go there. I'm fine with that. During the summer. It is, do you have the ability? Do you have enough other space to be able to? Not do constructions, storage and stuff there so that we can, um. Just have it kind of be a transition from the open space and not have too much going on during the summer. Is that possible? Or do you really need that area for that?
I think it's going to be challenging, kind of given, you know, the areas that are identified and kind of some of the uses that have been ident, you know, that we've been discussing. Probably, you know, the CapEx projects that we do every year minimally take about three acres of kind of lay down area. And that, that really is everything from when we're milling off roads or we're moving in. You know, um, materials for water projects or equipment. I mean, that's kind of. That activity right now out on block 11 there on that south end. And so that's three acres is really kind of the minimal. Acreage that we'd really need for that.
Three?
Correct. And so that could, we could use that three point eight that's identified as track 12B. That has a detention basin in it too. So it's really not effectively three eight. It's.
I might've misspoke. That's what I wanted to try to protect during the summer was 12B.
I think that's where we would be with that, that lay down. Cause 12A is really for a public works. You'd, you know, just to kind of let the, you know, kind of talk in terms of what that site and what we've been loosely saying is public works. Storage, but it's really become public works needs and support for, um, quite honestly, a lot of our partner organizations too. We have, um, you know, the decorative barricades there. We have the, the protective barricades for, um. Street events in the summertime. We have BCA, um, trailers. We have rec center fencing. We have BTO snow skull trailers. Um, we've really become kind of the, the. The location and the kind of landlord for all these additional items. In addition to the, the things that we need to store there, we have some of those Conex boxes have materials for our building repairs. All the buildings that we've done over the years, we save X amount of materials, you know, if we need to go back and do, um, maintenance to those buildings. So. Um, we've also been in addition to be in, you know, some displacement out of Stillson. The public works yard has also kind of undergone that same, um, loss of area. We've had expansion of buses. Bus storage. We got all these VMS boards now. We have, there's just been. As everyone can agree, the town has grown and along with that, just all the supports that go with that. And so it's just some of the storages, those materials. Bike racks, picnic tables.
James, could we, um, I guess to Dick's point, could we do the construction, um, staging on the school district parcel? So that that open space during the summer stays contiguous?
Yeah. If that, if that's, if that's parcels in play or a portion of that is in play for that, yeah, we could, we could be on that, that area.
Okay. If that works for you, I don't, I hear you, James. I'm supportive of your needs and I don't want to. Infer that I want to keep pushing you somewhere else. Cause there's not much else, not, not much other places to go as I, I recognize. Um, second thought and yeah, I'll let you mull that one over. Um, it would be preferable in my mind to be able to kind of have a transition. From the open space, you know, um, to have a transition from parcel eight to 12B. You know, during the summer, but you know, we can only do so much. Um, if we did pick, um. Yeah, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Um. Yeah, I'll save the other question. So let others go.
Okay. Any others?
I had a couple of questions for Shannon about the parking. The two days that they were over a thousand. Were those snow sculpture days or what were those days?
One was snow sculpture. The other was not.
And then of the over five hundred days, how many of those were snow sculpture days?
Two days were snow sculpture and the rest were not.
How many days during the winter do we know that the South Condo lot was full?
It's pretty much every weekend and then some additional days, but I can get that if Matt doesn't know it off the top of his head. Yeah. So we'll, we can get to that number.
Curiosity, don't, you don't have to kill yourself for it.
Can I pile on that? Is it fair to say that likely South Mcgannla was full on the days where we were over five hundred? I would think it, they, it would be.
I would believe it was.
Probably. Yeah. That's what I figured.
Marika?
Sorry.
Okay. If you're on a roll, that's okay.
It's quick. Um, just curious if we know data on occupancy when we had those days over five hundred. You know, how many cars were at one? How many were at two occupants? Any details on that?
Uh, no, I think the, you know, the Skiria is looking at and Breck Park looks at carpool. But I don't, we're not looking at occupants, especially not on airport.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Marika.
Um, I am gathering from that last conversation about storage in the summer, that this lot will not be accessible for parking in the summer.
Um, I think that is a council decision. If you wanted to utilize that area for some trailhead type parking. Um, the lot is, I think, big enough to do that where we could still accommodate three acres for construction and have parking. But you know, it's not going to look great if, if we do have construction material on it.
Do we know how many days between three fifty and five hundred we parked historically?
I, we have the, the count, so we could count, we could look and see what they are. I didn't look for that particular number.
One question with the buffer to the solar fields. Is that something we're required to have? On the proposed parking maps you have on the last two pages.
Buffer, the.
Between parking and solar fields. Is that something we're required to have?
We did that as part of the site planning for the solar fields, um, purpose to shield it. It was, I mean, it was like a discussion during that. As far as the code, and, and we've done that in other locations as far as the code, um, requires. I'm going to look that up. I think though, the, maybe the other piece to this is that if you're on, if you, so either. So if you're on the school district parcel, you're looking down at the solar fields. So there's a grade. There's a fairly big grade difference between the two. Um, I went out this morning to look at Vista Verde two, which is, you know, essentially about level with the solar panels. And so if you were standing on the south end of the Vista Verde units, looking towards the school district. It's well above where you would be standing.
Do we have, um. Any knowledge of, uh, damage or potential threats to the river with, uh, parking. On the west side of McCain Road, meaning oil leaks, gas leaks, uh, defecation. Um, I guess a lot of things that probably come with snow storage as well when you're trucking it in. Um, is that, has that been talked about and thought about? And how's that discussion been going?
So I'll toss it over because I know they've talked about it.
Yeah, I think for the, if we were on track day with the parking, a lot of that surface drainage would effectively go into the. The ditch line that's on the, on, you know, or go to the east and drain into the, the ditch line. And so I don't think there's real concerns about anything that's coming off in that surface lot. Going into directly into the river or affecting water quality. Uh, with respect to the snow storage, um, track 12B, we've worked on making a detention basin. That's going to go ahead and, um, address water quality for any of that water that will then effectively go into the river.
Right. And. I know this maybe be pie in the sky, but do we have any idea how many cars we park on? One side of McCain access road from one side to the other. Like if we were to have. For example, if we were to have a lot that was for three fifty and then allow parking on one side of McCain. Access road during those fourteen days to get to five hundred. Is, is that feasible of any sort? Or is that, um, and, and my, I guess where I'm going with that is if we. If we can expand to five hundred without building for five hundred, that seems like it would be beneficial.
So if we sort of combine the two proposals you've seen on the, the east side of the road in the past. Is that what you're talking about? Where it's on the road. Oh, on the roadside parking. I think that has a lot of complications, just safety wise. Um. We'd have the bus going through there and we'd have skiers in the road. So that does create some safety issues for sure. Um, we have. Traffic and then residential traffic. So. And we tend to not recommend on-street parking. Um, and then we'd have people walking to wherever the bus would be.
Might ask it a different way. Could we do a hybrid of the two parking lots where? We prioritize the smaller, the three fifty lot and then we share another hundred and fifty or so. Capacity with snow storage on the school lot. Is that possible?
I mean, I think that it's possible. I mean, one thing, if we could make a use for the other side. Um. So here you can kind of see that, the, the disconnect a little closer that you would have between the two. Locations. Um, I guess you could fill one lot first and then look at the other lot.
I mean, like weekends, we know, we would open the back part, you know, but during the week, just try to have a. I mean, like weekends, we know, we would open the back part, you know, but during the week, just try to have a temporary barrier or something to keep them in that smaller area. And then maybe towards the end of the season, those spring snows, you could start storing, storing, storing snow on them. But yeah, I guess you need the five hundred for, for spring break weeks, so.
Confusing for people too, when you start separating these to know where they're going um when they pull in. And assuming some of these are visitors from out of town, they.
And I think just from an efficiency standpoint too, to have the bus pick up and drop off all at the same spot because we often find that people don't even know what lot they parked in or where they're parked and they might. And it'll, and keep in mind, there is no lighting out there and so it will be dark, you know.
Yeah.
So.
From an operational standpoint, is there any value in moving some of the unsightly stuff or any challenges, I guess, with moving some of the unsightly operations we've got out kind of in that corridors, visitors come into town, is there any value in moving it to the west side of the Public Works parcel, um, that yard kind of behind your operations out airport? Can you move some of those Conax trailers? Is there room out there on the west of kind of the Public Works buildings and is?
Um, for this, in this area of twelve B, for instance, I, I'm not sure I understand.
Could you take?
Oh, could we move it to Public Works?
Yeah.
He's speechless.
Go.
Good for you, James. You're learning. The word is no.
Busting at the seams now and I don't know. I think I want to like a kind of a tour through the yard right now to see all the things that we have stored there and.
Um, that's good enough. Thanks. Your speechlessness was perfect. Thank you.
I mean, this, that question you bring, Todd, kind of I had a thought and Shannon and I talked, do I bring this up during other business or whatever? But I would really like to see us do some master planning or long-term planning around berms and, and screening and landscaping. And do it sooner as opposed to later. We may not implement till later. But um, you know, to just try to help screen and separate some of these uses out here, this being the gateway to town. I know I was on council when the water plant was finished and, you know, we had just spent sixty-five million dollars and we said, well, we're going to put a pretty light landscaping in and we can add more later. I think we need to add more later. It, you know, but that would be an example so that when you're coming down highway nine, we did a nice job on that building, but still it's a big wall. And I'd love to see some more robust landscaping there, not this year, but kind of a ten-year plan. And I mean, maybe the consultants could help us with some of this and, and just kind of look at how can we best make our workforce housing out there feel like home and housing and have it feel authentic and true to the character of our town. And, and all the different uses we have out there and help James out by helping, helping hide some of his stuff so we don't try to take that away too. So, um, thought.
Do we still have the um, do we still rent this location to the?
Yes.
And that's like a two-year contract or something?
It's, it's on a pretty limited lease deal right now. But that, that is an important question and, and not to get into all the details, but track two, as it's represented on, on that previous map or, or that concept drawing, that effectively that seven point five acres is not usable by Public Works. It's kind of been, five acres of that is um um, summer roll-offs, Columbine landscaping. And a future discussion on horses.
A past discussion on horses, but still our future.
I'm afraid so.
Little, and, and maybe it's for a later discussion, but curious on the lease lengths on the, the seven point five acres.
Yeah.
Month to month, with, with the caveat that we would give them at least a year. Yeah.
Certainly.
It's just tough because they don't have anywhere to go and both those companies are huge partners to us. It's just hard.
I know, tricky puzzle.
Yeah.
Shannon, did you say it was going to be reclaimed asphalt?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Just send dirt at first when we talked about it when we approved.
Yeah, so the, well, the um area where twelve A um, Public Works has done some work out there and I don't know if that's reclaimed asphalt or just gravel right now.
Um, I don't think, I don't believe we have any reclaimed asphalt on it. It's just some imported rock that we've made that.
I was just out there today. There's no asphalt.
Yeah.
It's rock.
On the track seven, um, I believe it's the recommendation of Shannon and probably planning to some degree that we do something more than dirt. And it ha, it needs a considerable amount of work and Scott can probably add more detail to this, but from what he has explained, at one point we put material down on that so that vegetation would grow. So it's very soft and there's a, there's a fair amount of work we need to do now to get it to the point where people can park on it. Is that accurate?
Peel it back, take away some of the top soil, soil.
Do we feel, or does staff feel like they have looked at every other opportunity for where we could put? Like even if we could put the three fifty here, but we could put extra, is there any place else that we could put additional parking? Like have we given you enough time to look at every other option that's possible?
Finding five hundred, space for five hundred parking spaces that the town owns is extremely difficult with the loss of block eleven. I think we've, and we've had conversations, you know, in the past about how we might be able to utilize smaller lots that aren't busy on the weekends and things like that. It, but when you, I think to Julia's point earlier, when you start separating, it just makes it very difficult for people to find their way. So even in the past, when we used Breck Elementary for several years during snow sculpture, we put employees there because we, trying to get guests to find that would be really hard. And so I think that's our challenge to Julia's point is finding a space that's big enough for five hundred cars. Um. Which, you know, I think in the, at this time, in this very moment, it seems like we would recommend that we do the five hundred, understanding that that may change over time and may not, we may not always need that many spaces.
There is mud.
Someday we'll bring something to you guys that is super simple.
Are we looking to make a decision now or what, what are we trying to accomplish here?
Um, if you give us the, the thumbs up to, to move forward on this, we would do some outreach to both Vista Verde and Silver Shekel and maybe in conjunction with um what THK is doing on the McCain open space. And, and if you would like us to work with them on this, I think that might be a great idea. We just need enough lead time to, to have it open for the winter season.
Shannon, is the south side of block eleven a no-go for this winter?
We believe it's a no-go. Um, it's, could you fit cars in there? You could, but we have, we have looked at it, you know, up, down and sideways and the one, the things we can't mitigate are the safety concerns. Because there's the conflict between the school and the buses and the cars and the, in entering and exiting through Breck Terrace. And we just, we can't figure out a solution for that safety piece.
I don't know that we have any good options other than, you know, I, I, I want to support John and the scary and be a good partner. We, we need the five hundred. I mean, we, we can't just underpark town as a whole. It becomes gridlock. You know, on those busiest days and our event days and everything else are important to us. Um, I want to support James and stop pushing, you know, his operations all over town. I mean, we've got to, got to kind of let him solidify a little. I, I would really like to see us invest a little more and help, get some help and then I was good sales pitch guys, but uh, you know, I think we might have some consultants that could help us with really some robust screening and whether it's berms and landscaping or whatever it is, but really to take a hard look at, in a creative approach to, to try to make all of these uses work out there without a lot of conflict and keeping in mind the Silver Shekel neighborhood, along with um really, really emphasizing our open space parcel, the fifteen acres are super important to me as, as you guys know from previous discussions. So I'll start the discussion by proposing that, I guess.
Anybody want to follow that up?
I'll follow that up. I, I agree with Dick that I think it's irresponsible to just, to think that these other hundred and fifty cars are going to find a place to go on those days that they need to park. And I think, I don't know who said this, Todd maybe, but the idea that track seven plant, concept A, you've got your three fifty and then it can be pushed back on those days that we need it, you know, just put a barricade up there to start with and move it back. As we're moving it back, the snow is coming forward and then pretty soon the snow will come forward and we won't need the five hundred spaces anymore. But I think, and I think Dick said it, we're, we're a partner with the ski area. And we don't want these cars going all over town looking for a place to park. So I'm, my vote is for track seven, five hundred spots that could be three fifty and then another hundred and fifty if we have to expand it back.
Very good. Okay. Um, I don't love putting parking on McCain, but that's no one's fault. We just don't have anywhere to put it. I agree. We do need to be a good partner. Um, I like Steve's idea of having maybe that moving, that moving barricade. Um, and I feel slightly more hopeful today that THK seems to think they can do some creative maneuvering to help us minimize the the eyesore that that parking could create.
Sure. Um. Uh, unfortunately, I, I don't feel like I can be very productive with comments. Um, because I just don't believe we should be parking on the west side of McCain Road. Um, I think that we're to, you know, how many times do we have to redo and then think we're going to undo it and like, and, and put on top soil so things will grow and then take that off so we can put, so we can pave it so that we can maybe one day take that off and put top soil again. There. This is the gateway to town. This is our, what borders valuable open space in this beautiful river. Um. I would, my, I, I can't, I can't be for it. Um. Uh, and I understand that that's difficult because, well, I don't have another solution. But I would love to encourage staff to try to figure out how to make this south side of block eleven work for one more season. And spend this time of kicking can down the road to to do better and to find something that is, uh, you know, that satisfies our conservation uh etiquette and our edict that, that says that we need to conserve and not just continually just push on to area that we're able to just because we're able to. Um, we're creating a whole lot of blacktop for fourteen days a year. And I just feel like there's got to be a better way. So I really, really appreciate all your work and all, and I support everyone involved. I just, I feel like we, we should aim higher.
Um, I understand your concern and I agree with most of what has been said. Um, discussing parking is nowhere nearly as rewarding as seeing what the rest of the open space will become. But um, there aren't viable alternatives that are safe and safety is a critical concern. That's why I haven't considered block eleven since we made that decision. And I appreciate you evaluating the different options to see what's the least impactful, what respects the housing, what respects the open space. Um, and of course, safety and being a partner for the ski area. So um, again, I think Shannon opened it up saying that this is a temporary solution, that we are forced to make this decision and without any viable alternatives, I appreciate staff's work. And I think this is the direction we can go and with some creative solutions, I think we can continually reduce those impacts while down the road looking for a more permanent solution.
Todd?
And I had one thing just to, and Jay, I, I really appreciate what you're saying and I, I don't like it either. You know, maybe one thing to put into this would, if we have to scrape and do something for the three hundred and fifty spots on the front of block seven, we leave the back part as it is and by the time we need them, it'll be frozen. We don't have tarred surfaces, just leave it like it is. I mean, we don't have blacktop and block eleven. It's got more rock, but still, maybe we just minimize what we try to to scrape and fill on that, that back part. I don't know, just throwing that out. Thank you.
Todd?
I really appreciate Jay's comments about not wanting to do anything on the west side of that access road. I also appreciate everybody else's comments. It's a really complicated puzzle and parking is important, visitor experience is important. I'm okay, can't believe I'm going to say this, but I'm okay with putting something on parcel seven to be a good partner with the ski area and make sure we're, we're showing we can work with them. I'd love down the road to assess kind of that whole zone, right? And it's, it's super important on the open space, you know, it's like, can we be creative with the solar panels and you know, is there a way to get parking under that, you know, or when their life cycle's done? I just, yeah, we've got some opportunities with that zone. I'm good with the three hundred thousand. There's ten, five hundred for zone seven, even though I don't really like it.
Feel bad. Um, all right. So I'm hoping that you can use the topsoil that's there to create a berm. I also really like the fabric. Maybe we can do the fabric. It'd probably be ten times as expensive, but it'd be prettier. Um, I really am super against the blacktop as well. If there's a way to do rock something, the blacktop just, you can see it from everywhere, you know, so it'd be really nice if it wasn't that. Um, but understanding that blacktop is certainly um probably easier to manage with the river right there, so um, I'm not sure, but you guys are the best. I bet you can do it.
Come on, Sam.
Um, and I guess just to reiterate so that the public really hears this, is that it's just such a, this is a painful conversation for everyone and it really is not easy to decide to put parking in this area. Um, and really for me, it does come down to that I don't want the parking in the employee housing. I really think that's.
You don't want it where?
With the employee housing right there and I just don't want that traffic impacting and it's, there's already going to be a lot going on there and we know um, you know, how many kids are running around and how many people are using that space and just, it's just too much conflict for block eleven. So um, I also support parking on track seven, hoping that we can continue having conversations with CMC and some of our wonderful, wonderful partners who have open parking spaces and open tracks of land that maybe they'd like to partner with us on. Um, and you know, and trying to do something that looks nice, but also could be um made back into open space ultimately, if we can someday. But I think you guys did a really nice job with, um, and I'm really glad that, I thought, I was worried about these two being on the same agenda. But I have a lot of confidence in our um open space consultants. They seem great. space consultants. They seem great and I'm very hopeful that they can help us create a good alternative.
Thank you very much.
All right. And thanks, John. Of course, we want to be great partners to the ski area.
We're to having a more comprehensive discussion about all the agreements and updating and trying to get them so they work for everybody well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Carol has to go to the CML thing, so I'm not going to do anything more right now, but did you need to do anything else in this?
I have a several things for you, but I can do them tonight.
Okay. All right. The work session is adjourned. See you at seven. Inclusion of some of the more cheeses.
Yeah.
Okay. The time is seven o'clock. I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for June twenty fourth to order a roll call, please, May.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton.
Here.
Steve Gerard.
Here.
Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
Present.
Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here.
All right. Approval of the minutes. Town council fits for June tenth, twenty twenty five. We're in the packet. Any corrections, changes? All right. Minutes stand. Approval of the agenda. Shannon, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. The agenda stands communications to council. This is an opportunity for public comment. These are non-agenda items only. So there's a three-minute time limit, please. You can feel free to step forward to the lectern and state your name for the record.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
You can lift the mic up if you want to and be louder. There you go. That's great.
Test, test, test.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Angela Bokey. I live at sixty-six Longridge Drive in Breckenridge, Colorado, and I'm here tonight to discuss the noxious, noxious weed program. Last summer, I was walking our dog along our street when a neighbor informed me that the county had been by to spray herbicide earlier in the day. The next day, it was quite apparent that everything along the roadside, including six to twelve feet into the ditch was withering. By the end of the week, all the wildflowers, flowering bushes and pine trees along the side of the road were dead. What came back this spring? Only the weeds. What was accomplished? The eradication of the natural habitat so the weeds could spread. The repeated applications having further weakened the soil and of course exposing humans, pets, wildlife and pollinators to a substance known to cause cancer and kill. Herbicides cause cancer. This is an undisputed fact. If you want proof, Google Monsanto lawsuits. This year, again, you have chosen to spray neurotoxins along the yards and streets of the people you represent. Check out the sustainability page on the town of Breckenridge website and ponder the hypocrisy of that. The fact that there are safer ways to treat noxious weeds is also indisputable and the council has been made aware of this alternative. The national organization, Non-Toxic Neighborhoods, has provided a much safer plan to the town, but rather than taking action, our town council has decided to expose its residents to cancer-causing agents for the next three days. On your sustainable Breck page, it also claims you are walking the talk. Prove it. The members of this town council are now on notice. You are supporting the use of neurotoxins rather than safer alternatives. There is still time for you to do the right thing. Stop the spraying before it begins tomorrow. People will tell you it's too late, but it's not. It's your first job, number one job to protect your citizens' health. You have the power to stop this. You have the power to do better. In the wise words of Maya Angelou, when you know better, do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Hi, good evening. I'm Richard Himmelstein. I live at six seventy-five Peak Six Trail and I'm here tonight. I had a brief conversation with Sarah Crump, your planner, earlier today. She advised me that, uh, there's going to be a vote for a de novo hearing tonight on, on independent homes project. So I'm not going to talk about any of the specific stuff in my, in my letter, but one thing I just want the, uh, town council to really consider is, uh, the, the, the developers asking for, uh, eneasement for the gondola airspace. And the gondola airspace, uh, is a vital asset to the town. And if, if the town looks into this further, I mean, you could consider, uh, this airspace and gondola your most valued roadway in all town of Breckenridge based on the traffic. And my concern is the town needs to look into this and do some due diligence because any changes down to the road, down the road, uh, with this gondola, for example, we went with the bigger gondola, any change of the gondola, the structures that the developer is asking to build is going to impact, uh, the town of Breck's rights to the, to the, to the gondola and you, you're probably going to have, have limitations. And I'm just requesting, uh, town council do their due diligence and planning, I wish had brought this to your attention because it's, it's, it's extremely, it, it's one of your greatest valued assets and you need to evaluate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just for clarification, the town isn't in, uh, responsible for granting any sort of, um, airspace or width, um, determination for that. So that would be the tram board. So we're not in charge of doing that variation, but appreciate your comments and we'll continue to look at that, into that project as we do a vote in a little bit. Thank you. Sorry. All right. Any further public comments? Okay. Public comments are closed. We're going to move on to the Breckenridge Ski Resort update. John's here with us.
Good evening. Again, thanks for having me. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, it's always a pleasure to come here and, and I just, I was reflecting recently with some friends of mine. I've lived in five different mountain communities and the partnership between the resort and the town is nowhere near the strong. So just appreciate the relationship and the partnerships we have with you. Um, wanted to give just a quick kind of high level recap of the entire winter, uh, kind of focused around our main resort priorities, which are flow and circulation, employees, our community, and then just guest service. So, um, on the flow and circulation side, you know, we continue to see, uh, the benefits of some of the work we've done. The chair five install has just been transformational for the peak eight base area. We've seen misloads and misrepresentation of skier ability and rider abilities on the Colorado and the Rocky Chair just continue to go down because of that chair. Having that access has been transformational for that base area. And obviously for our ski school kids, uh, the progression that it provided for them has been amazing. So super excited with that. We've also seen year-over-year increase on the gondola ski back usage. Um, we have a way of monitoring that with some cameras and data that we call, copy there and, uh, for the third straight year, that usage at the end of the day, we can say two o'clock till three thirty continues to go up, which is a good, good thing for us. Um, we have continued to ramp up our, uh, guest messaging around parking reservations and carpooling. Both programs saw year-over-year increases in the uses of those as well. So we feel like we're on a good track and still have a long ways to go, um, in getting our guests kind of habitual trained to use some of those opportunities they have. Um, and then we continue to work on on mountain signage project. We've been on this for about three years now, um, really to help guests navigate from peak to peak laterally across the mountain. It's not the easiest mountain to navigate if you don't know it well. Um, so we've enlisted some of our ski patrollers and some of our longtime locals and they're continuing to work on our signage program and we're continuing to work on that this summer as well. So happy about that. Um, on the employee side, we started out with a bang, our opening day ski preview, which started about three years ago, had our largest turnout we've ever had. Super excited about that. Our winter welcome back at the Riverwalk in December also had our largest turnout we've ever had. And this year, we held eighteen events throughout the season engaging about thirty-five hundred employees, which is about twelve hundred above last year. So super happy with that. And then our year-round childcare for the employees in the community is close to capacity, um, almost every day. So super happy about that and being able to provide that for our teams. Excuse me. Um, we had thirty team leads and supervisors create a multi-week leadership session and we'll run another thirty through this summer, continued focus on their development. And then we recognized a hundred and eighty employees at our tenure party for their service with Breckenville Resorts, including, as I said earlier, three employees at fifty years, all at Breck, which is really impressive, a patroller, maintenance and a ski school employee. Um, we're also making further investments this summer in our employee housing. We're going to replace a bunch of furniture, appliances. We're going to redo some floors and add to the fire panels and then some continued boiler upgrades as well. So that, some of that's already kicked off and already started. From the community side, um, continue to support our community with the I seventy coalition and you all, better messaging, travel habits, carpool options and car-free platforms. Partnered with the town for the second year on snow staying, as you all know, carpool utilization has been up five percent year-over-year. Cars parked after three PM in our lot has increased by thirteen percent year-over-year. So we're starting to see some of the habits change. Community first tracks every Friday in January, again, saw increased participation. So we're seeing more folks come out and take advantage of that. Um, and then we also held a community first tracks and breakfast for the Summit Foundation, their medallion pass holders. Super excited about that. They had a great time. Um, our annual pond skim event moved to two days this year, which has been a huge hit. We're able to reserve some spots for our employees and some of the locals as well. And then we partner that with our peaks and beats tour in the base area of Peak Eight, which was super popular, um, and we think went over really well and we were able to get everybody off that plaza and down the mountain by five thirty, which was huge. Um, as we look to future, we're certainly know there's mutual interest in larger events like some of these. We're partnering right now with the, or we're working with some of our partners right now. Talk about opportunities, enhance early season, especially around opening day and Uler Fest, and we're in the works of completing some of that work right now. So hopefully next time I see you, I'll have some updates to share on some of our plans. Um, this Thursday, we're hosting, uh, FERC night out at the Maggie. Hope to see many of you there. We're in our second year of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant to support their food market. So we're proud of that. Um, we're, continue to collaborate BGV using vert to reduce some of the waste to landfill with the demolition of the peak eight area, our admin building. It's been a big project. Um, then we've also expanded a couple of our recycling programs to include snack rack, snack wrappers, nitrate gloves, raw wood and lumber, skiing rides gear, past media and soft plastics. Again, just trying to make an effort to keep those out of our landfill here in Summit County. Um, then a few weeks ago, we hosted our mountain cleanup base area, peak eight, peak nine and peak seven. We had over a hundred and fifty employees collect almost eight hundred pounds of trash across the mountain. And then lastly, we continue to may enhance our snowmaking system. We're placing guns with energy efficient automated snowmaking technology, which will be a future for less water, less energy, everything. So, um, it's an ongoing process trying to tie new system, our new technology into a thirty-five year old system is a little bit of a challenge. So continue to work on that. Um, summer, we opened up summer on June thirteenth with all of our peak eight base area activities. And then last, last Friday, we opened scenic rides, biking and Alpine camp on the Colorado Chair. Brett Connect gondola will continue to operate through Labor Day daily. And then once again, we have our summer community first tracks, which we saw good success on that. Last year, we hosted one last Friday, about a hundred and fifty people show up for the first hour to take advantage of it. And then we have three more coming up to, uh, two in June or two, one in July and two in August. So we're excited about that. And then we also have an offer for fifty dollars off, if you, fifty dollars off scenic ride. If you spend fifty dollars at one of our owned and operated retail stores and then half off a scenic ride. If you attend any one of the local events and just show us your ticket, we'll give you a discount on that as well. So lastly, a couple of things, um, we're working closely with BGV on all the moving projects, especially around the PK eight base yard and the mountain, mountain shop area on mountain. Um, we'll be moving out of the admin building. I can't even tell you how long that's been there. In, uh, three weeks will be our final date in there. So we got some employees were kind of spreading around and then we're well into our maintenance season with key projects and snowmaking, lift maintenance, we're on mountain, uh, restaurants. And then we're also re-engaged with the Forest Service on some of our water runoff management plans to redo some of those. And that's the high level cap of the winter.
Love all that sustainability stuff. Any questions for John?
I do want to add on the sustainability. We, this past winter, I think most of you know this, but all of our restaurants went plastic free on the mountain and in the base areas and that will be kind of the standard moving forward. And we're working with many of our other resorts on how we partner with you all and we pull that off with all of our vendors as well. So super successful.
Yeah, we're really grateful for that part of it.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Good luck this summer. Okay. Next up, we're going to have National Repertory Orchestra update from Dave.
Hello, Mayor. Town Council. I'm Dave De Peters with the National Repertory Orchestra. Thank you very much, uh, for letting me be here. I'll just start off by saying, I don't talk as fast as he does.
I can only say half as much.
You might have to cut me a little bit of slack. Um, first of all, thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you. We are grateful for the town's support, not only through grant funding, but also through al- allowing us to call Breckenridge our home for the last thirty-two years. Uh, we love being here and we look forward to thirty-two and many, many more after that. Summer has begun because we know that. The musicians are, uh, precariously placing their instruments on their back and riding around town and scaring the heck out of me, but, um, that's another story. But it's here. We're here. We had a great first concert. Um, uh, great, uh, great crowd. We have a really fantastic orchestra. Michael Stern has returned as our music director. We have eighty musicians. They are the most talented, dedicated musicians you will find anywhere. Um, we were, they were chosen out of seven hundred and forty-seven who auditioned. So almost one in ten get in to the NRO. Um, from, they represent twenty-five states and twelve different countries and they're currently playing already in ninety-five different orchestras. So this is truly the National Repertory Orchestra. We compete against basically three big other organizations to get these best musicians to come here. Uh, Aspen, Tanglewood, which is in the Berkshire, Berkshires and Music Academy of West, which is in, um, Santa Barbara. They all have over ten times our budget to bring in truly amazing people and they're great organizations. But musicians choose to come here. And the reasons why is one, Michael Stern is a great asset to this organization, to the town. He, um, is a great mentor and a great teacher and musicians know that. Our unique education process of experiential learning allows musicians to learn a tremendous amount in a short period of time. Of course, the town is a huge draw because who wouldn't rather be in Breckenridge than Aspen, right? It's pretty easy. Uh, but it's also the connection to the people. Uh, right now, the musicians are out having dinner at, uh, St. John's Church. They're going to be, more than likely, most of them are going to be going over to Broken Compass for trivia night. They truly embed in this community and it really is a lasting effect on our musicians. We have a great host family program where a lot of people, they don't house them as far as allowing them to stay overnight, but they bring them in, they feed them, they take them on adventures, they bike, go biking, hiking and doing great things with them and they create lasting lifelong friendships. And lastly, we are the only of all of those organizations. We are the only tuition, fully tuition-free organization. And lastly, we are the only of all of those organizations, we are the only tuition, fully tuition free organization. Our musicians receive between ten and twelve thousand dollars in scholarships each year when they come here. They pay for almost nothing except for a little bit of food, but even then they get a food stipend, they get travel stipend. And they get their housing as well as their education while they're here. This year, we're going to be doing sixteen performances at the Riverwalk, including our free family and kids program. And we'll be doing an additional seventy other programs just in Breckenridge. Another twenty outside of Breckenridge that are free and open to the public. That people can just come and enjoy the music and get to know our musicians. Our vision is to be a more inclusive and welcoming organization each year. We just want people to come. Get to know who we are and enjoy the music. We don't care how much you know about classical music. We don't care. You know, that you may or may not even connect with it. All we care about is just come. Let the music wash over you, get to know our musicians, you will love it. Last year, we had, I think this inclusiveness is working well. Last year, we broke all of our attendance records of for the Riverwalk Center and all of the places we played at last year. We touched more than twenty three thousand five hundred people. In eight weeks, which is a pretty remarkable amount of of people. Also, our musicians are feeling that because twenty five percent of our musicians are returning musicians this year. They have chosen to come back here after having been here already. We work very hard on keeping our pricing down. Our most expensive price is ticket price is fifty eight dollars. For the masterworks, the most expensive price is fifty three dollars. And you can buy it, an adult can buy a ticket at any concert for twenty one dollars. Any person under seventeen can get in for five dollars. And we have a program for family passes, a family of four. As long as you have two kids can come to sixteen, or I'm sorry, twelve different concerts for a hundred and ninety two dollars total. So we work very hard to make ourselves accessible to everybody who wants to come to these concerts. On that, our alumni string quartet, we bring an alumni string quartet every year. That reaches out into the community for educate through educational programs. This year, we're going to six different preschools for eleven different unique visits. Five day camps, four libraries and pop up concerts throughout the county. Our, you can see on our brochure, our season is titled discovered the N R O, which I hope everybody gets to discover. The N R O this year, this year, we've chosen to really focus on the things that. Connect us rather than the things that divide us. So we have. Really focused on the feelings and the emotions that brought us here. We have a lot of different backgrounds. We come from different places. We come from, you know, different educations, all sorts of differences. But we have one thing in common. We are all in this room tonight. We are all here in Breckenridge. We have all chosen to be here. And that is something we choose to focus on this year. So we're choosing. Emotions and feelings that bring people to Summit County. What might be dreams, it might, you might have dreamt, I always wanted to live in a, at a mountain town. The tranquility of being here, the spirit, the resilience, the joy, the rejuvenation. All of these things are explored in all of our concerts this year. So you come to a concert. You focus on that experience, that feeling that may have brought you here. And you can hear music that will focus you on that feeling. We love to partner and people love to partner with us. This year, we'll be doing our annual. First responders concert on July twelfth with Ford Discover Spirit. We're also partnering with Tree Top Child Advocacy to help them raise some money. On July twenty sixth, Discover Jubilation. And we're partnering with a couple of different music programs here, Summit Band, Summit Choral Society and Alpin Glow Chamber Music. On July thirtieth, Discover Inspiration. We're also having our free family concert, Discover Space with Frosted Flamingo on July sixteenth. And of course, we're working with Breck Backstage Theater, Breck Create, Breck Film, Breck History. And the Breckenridge Social Equity Commission. We've given away so far and we'll give away a lot more fifty, more than fifty tickets. To seventeen different not for profits to help them raise money for their organizations. And we also give tickets to mountain mentors and mountain scholars to allow their mentees to come into the concerts for free. And of course, we're continuing our Adopt a River program again this year from the dredge to Watson. So we, we every three weeks, we. Have a volunteer group that cleans up the river and hopefully keeps it nice for everybody. Our film this year is Indiana Jones Raiders of the Lost Ark on July eighteenth. So I hope you all can join us for that. Briefly, we have a couple of concerns for this year. The changing demographics here in town is definitely affecting us. A lot of our loyal supporters are having to leave Summit County. That happens. And we're finding that the people who are coming in, we're having more and more difficult time connecting with those people. So it's been a struggle, something we've been very much focused on. And something I just wanted to bring your attention to. And of course, ticket sales this year, we are keeping an eye on the same. Numbers that Bill and everybody is sharing that we're seeing rental properties down significantly and. We, while we had a great first concert, we're seeing a precipitous drop off for the rest of June this year so far. The future of classical music is in Breckenridge this summer. You may not think you know enough about classical music, or you may not get it, or you may not even think you like it. But I guarantee you, if you come to a concert this summer, you will, one, hear something familiar that you will. You have heard before and two, you will hear something that you will want to hear again. Thank you.
Questions for Dave? I think you made us, yeah, I think you convinced everyone here to come to a concert. And of course, we'll see you in the community and we do really appreciate all those partnerships. I think that's one of the things that make Breckenridge really special and fun to visit, especially in the summer is. Seeing groups of four and pop up and all over town. And it's really cool how you guys have just expanded out of the Riverwalk. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Onto continued business, second reading of council bills. Series number nine, series twenty twenty five, an ordinance approving an amendment to a lease of the Breckenridge Professional Building, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All I was going to do is pitch Metallica this weekend, but I can't overcome that. So. I'll call it a day. I'm here to submit as for the approval for the second reading of the American Tower lease of the Breck Professional Building. It's a two four year extensions is the third amendment of the lease, which will take it to January thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave on this one? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number nine, series twenty twenty five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number nine, series twenty twenty five, the title of which has been written in the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Moving into first reading of Council Bills. Council Bill number ten, series twenty twenty five, an ordinance approving an amended and restated fiber lease and network operations agreement. Chris.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is the first reading of the amended and restated fiber lease and network operation agreement between the town and Allo Communications. Staff's recommendation is you pass it on first reading.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Chris? All right. Any comments from the public on Council Bill number ten? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number ten, series twenty twenty five, title of which has been written into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker, Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Moving on to Council Bill number eleven. Series twenty twenty five. You take it, Chris.
Thank you. Excuse me. Before he is the first reading of the Comcast franchise agreement. For the cable television, for cable television services, staff's recommendation is you pass that on first reading.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number eleven? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number eleven, series twenty twenty five, an ordinance approving the grant of a cable franchise to Comcast of California, Colorado, Florida, Oregon, Inc. And approving a cable franchise agreement between Comcast of California, Colorado, Florida, Oregon, Inc. And the town of Breckenridge, Colorado.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Member Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right. Moving on to resolutions, resolution number ten, series twenty twenty five, a resolution approving an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement for the Summit County Childcare Tuition Assistance. Among Summit County and the towns of Blue River, Dillon, Frisco, Keystone and Silverthorne and early childhood options.
Mayor and Council, you have before you a resolution that would adopt an amended and restated childcare I G A. That sets forth the general guidelines of the first steps program and defines the roles and responsibilities for. The program itself and sets the percentage allocations for each jurisdiction. That is what primarily has been amended in this agreement and those. Percentages are being set based on where the families live and work. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. One item that I didn't mention earlier today. Is that the seven hundred and thirty six thousand dollars is budgeted. And expected to be invoiced for the first steps program for the town of Breckenridge in the twenty four twenty five school year. Well, I guess it is for the twenty four twenty five school year. So we're already into that year. And this agreement, I just wanted to point out that it's essentially backdating. The percentages and allocations for each of the jurisdictions.
Thanks, Shannon. Any questions for Shannon? All right. Can I have a motion?
Move that we pass resolution number ten, series twenty twenty five, the lengthy title, which was thankfully written into the record by Mayor Owens.
Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
All right, moving into planning matters, we have planning commission decisions. We have a call up?
Yeah, I would like to call up the, the B G B parcel three site plan motive modification. At three fifty five North Park Avenue. Planning twenty twenty five dash zero one one six. Based on the tree screening on Park Avenue not being compliant with the development agreement.
Okay, do we have any discussion or we just go right into a vote, Kelly?
You can have a discussion if you want, or you can just make that your motion. Dick, if you want, yeah.
Does anyone else want to say anything?
Second.
All right. Moving right along. Roll call, please, May.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
All right, so we will have a call up and that will be scheduled and you'll let us know when that's coming.
Yep, it looks like due to schedules with the planning department, it's likely that that is going to be at your next meeting.
Oh, wow, okay.
So it'll be fast. It's a Class C application, so the noticing requirements are only seven days mail notice.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Ready for the report of the town manager and staff, Shannon?
All right, I have several things for you tonight. So, I sent you a copy of a letter that we received from Elevated Community Health, Health, asking for a seventy five thousand dollar contribution to their dental office. And for anyone in the public who's interested, there are copies on the table since this was not in the packet. If you had an opportunity to read the request, I think it covers. Pretty much most of what you would want to know about it and what they would be using the funding for. Kelly and I posed some questions to them to really try to understand how the office would be operating, if they would be. Accepting Medicaid, how many days they would be open, if they'd have a true pediatric certified dentist. And we got good answers to all those questions. They are going to accept Medicaid. They are going to have a certified pediatric dentist. The office is currently open three days, sometimes two days a week because the current dentist comes up from Evergreen. So they would start with three days and then try to expand that to four. This, I know you're all going to ask me, so I'll start with this. There was an ask made of all of the communities and the county. Folks in the other jurisdictions, they're really feeling strapped. And so I think the majority of them opted not to make a contribution. But we wanted to bring this to you. We felt like, or I felt like anyway, and Kelly can speak for her opinion, but. I felt like this was something that was really needed in our community and that. You know, I was happy to see that Elevated was trying to make this work. I also had a meeting with Josh Cogdill, I think is how you say his last name, to talk about. What they're doing, how their funding looks, whether or not they're going to see. Addressed a cut in their federal funding and how, you know, like if we give you seventy five thousand dollars now for the dentist office. And now you get federal cuts, are you coming back? Not that they won't come back, but he feels pretty confident in their financial position. So. Anyway, I felt better about that piece of it. And I wanted to bring this to you. So I'm happy to answer any questions and Kelly may have more to add as well.
I think the only thing that I would add is I was really. Like concerned that this service was already being provided in the community by other dentists. Whether they were pediatric or not, that they were able to fill this. And so I talked to a couple of other dentists in the community and they said, this is desperately needed. And so they really thought that, you know, anything we can do, if we can afford to help them stay open. And be a more successful pediatric dentistry that they should. Also, they did say knowing that many of the surgeries would still need to be done. In Evergreen or on the front range because it's just safer when you put a little person under anesthesia or whatever they put them under laughing gas. That it's better at the lower elevation. But they absolutely were convinced that this was something that was needed in our community.
So do you have any insight from equity?
No, we haven't talked about this at all, but I know Elevated is the. Care clinic that the town has supported for many, many years. And has a track record of providing needed services to the community, but I couldn't speak to the commission on that other than. Using our lens, if it's a service we don't have in our community, that I'm sure there would be support.
Shannon, do you know if they have Spanish speaking staff?
I know Elevated has Spanish speaking staff, you know. I don't know that about the dentist in particular and I, they already have hygienists. Within Elevated. Because they do.
A school based.
School based.
So they do a bunch of school based dental as well as the health. And so they are Spanish speakers as well. So I would recommend if anyone wants my opinion, I think, I mean, I know that we have been very tight and pulling back on. Some of the big expenditures that we've been considering. But this seems like a very, you know, this is community based. This is the stuff that we, that people rely on Breckenridge to do. Is to when nobody else will come to bat, is to step up and say, we want this to be there for kids who are on Medicaid. I mean, they're not. You know, they're not in a position to go to a different dentist and they probably aren't in a position to. and they probably aren't in a position to take a car and get off work for a day and go to Denver for a dentist. So in my mind, I think this is a very worthy cause and I would love to see us support it.
I'm in agreement.
It's an easy lift. I think we do it.
I agree.
Thank you. Okay, so the next piece, I think you've seen this in the updates that Peyton has sent you. There's a lot of conversation happening right now around the federal lands disposal segment of the big beautiful bill. So there's been a lot of conversation locally amongst towns. Eric spoke to us on behalf of the V O C C and suggested a kind of combined letter from everyone. We've all cast, also sent a letter. I think Peyton probably shared that with you. So there's a lot of, well, there's a lot of conversation going around about either passing a resolution and/or drafting a letter that we could send to representatives and senators. And also some internal conversations around what other things could we be doing or preparing for in order to protect lands near Breckenridge, which could look like potentially trying to purchase lands ourselves. That was all, all that conversation happened and then the parliamentarian for the Senate said, it's, you ruled that they couldn't have that provision as part of the bill and they had to pull it out. But Senator Lee from Utah is bound and determined to get some kind of language back in the bill. Looks like mostly it would be B M L land. It may be some distances between, you know, the circumference of a city or a town and, you know, say a five-mile distance outside of that. But as of earlier today, we hadn't seen what that language would look like. And I, my guess is they're going to keep trying to get some provision into that bill. So we wanted to talk with you tonight to see, you know, given all of this and where we are at this moment, would you, would you support doing some kind of letter, potentially a resolution, and having a plan or developing some options to bring to you if it came to pass that there were going to be public lands that were for sale in our area?
I'll start out with that, Shannon. I had that independent thought myself and did submit to Shannon, Scott, and Keely a rough draft of a proposed resolution and whether that's by resolution or by letter. And I, I don't have particular pride of authorship and if it could be distributed to the rest of the council members, I just didn't think that was right to do unless the town and the town attorney felt it was appropriate. But it could be distributed for people to look at and get it and make it better. But I think, I think we need to go on record with all of our congressional representatives and senators that we don't want our land for sale.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. And I think that if something does pass that impacts our community, we've got to be prepared to act. So I think thinking about this ahead of time is really valuable and just being prepared if something comes to pass.
I'm, I'm in agreement and I'd like to just add, I've, I'm seeing a lot of our 20-somethings more engaged on this issue than I've seen engaged in any other issue maybe ever. I would love to try to think of a way to embrace their engagement and encourage a positive dialogue from them and, you know, try to keep them engaged and, and continue to be involved and trying to be informed. So I'm not sure how to do that, but maybe further discussion would.
Yes, I would agree that we should.
Yeah, I think going along the, the letter line at first, just to allow, you know, just to arm our representatives with material to go to bat for us, I think is really important.
And I don't remember, I think it was Kelly or Carol maybe that brought up the idea of writing thank you notes to the Republican representatives from Colorado who, from the House that voted against it. And so Julia is doing that research and we'll be sending them a note as well, thanking them for that. Okay. I believe unless you guys have responded that we have two tickets still left for the Creative and Culinary Affair BCA. So if there's somebody who's interested in going and you haven't signed up or let Peyton know, please do let her know. And this morning, the sheriff recommended to the V O C C that we enter into Stage 1 fire restrictions. So the V O C C passed a resolution and we have presented the mayor with a proclamation to sign that would put the town of Breckenridge also in Stage 1 fire restrictions. So we just want to let you all know that that's unfortunately the direction we're going. The restrictions take effect at 12:01 on Friday morning.
Can you remind us what those include? I always get them mixed up, which is more.
Yes. And I can share the proclamation to you, but with all of you. But essentially it is open fires, like outdoor fires, like campfires, warming fires, bonfires, smoking except in a vehicle or a building or designated outdoor areas, fireworks, which we don't allow anyway, explosives, disposal of burning objects, operating chainsaws without a guard, blasting, grinding, welding, those kinds of things without having water, some, you know, materials put out fire. And then there's also in here a list of activities that are permitted, like outdoor fireplaces and things like that. But I'll send this out to you and we can do, like, we've done it before, but I think we could do some community education and outreach around these things as well.
That'd be great, thanks. Kelly, does, we've gone through this before, but do any of our fire restrictions prohibit the sale of firewood within town limits?
The sale of firewood? No.
Is that anything that we would have jurisdiction over if we enter in?
I think we have done that in the past.
Yeah.
It's at a different stage.
I wouldn't recommend it as part of a Stage 1.
Yeah.
But I think in a Stage 2, you could certainly do that, or 3, if we ever get there, hopefully not.
I think we have in the, either we put it in our restrictions in the past or we just asked City Market to stop selling it. I believe they did. So, but we'll keep an eye on that.
Great call, Jay.
It doesn't get worse. So, you know, we talked about the parking with the ski area and also working on the parking agreement or agreements revisions. And someone suggested that we pull together a small working group, which I think is a really great idea. So I'm wondering how council would feel about having a council member or someone on that working group. It's kind of, I'm thinking of it in a little bit like how we did the lease for the parking structure where Rick and Eric worked on that on behalf of council. So something, you know, sort of similar to that, but making sure that we have council, someone from council who's providing some input on, you know, where we go with it in that negotiation.
Right. Do you want to just, if everyone's in support of that, then are you just going to maybe?
Oh, I can.
Figure out the group and?
Yeah, and then I can email and see who's interested in it.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think it's great, yeah. To know is a surprise to you.
Uh huh, yeah. It was recommended by a very, very smart person. And then the last thing I had, I don't know if it was on the last set of meeting agendas that you all received, but we are going to, you're going to get an email on this. We're going to ask you guys to do some Incident Command Emergency Management Training. It's been a really, really long time since we have done anything like that with the council. And so once Rick is back, we'll get out an email to you with a, an online class that we're going to ask you to do. It takes about two hours. But you'll have between, you know, say next week and July 22nd to get that done. And then we're going to start the July 22nd meeting at 1:30 and we'll have someone from Emergency Management here for both council and our senior leadership team to run through all the important aspects of Incident Command and what your roles and responsibilities are during an emergency. So I just wanted, you know, we'll send you out the details, but I wanted to make sure that you had it on your calendars or in your minds that we're going to start a little bit early that day.
Which meeting again?
July 22nd.
Okay, thank you. That's a great idea.
Earlier than two?
Because that's the time that they could provide the training. And it will be about 90 minutes long. Hope that doesn't mess anyone up too much. And that is all I had tonight.
That's it?
Okay.
All right, report of the mayor and council members, cast, M M C. Right back at you, Shannon. I, have we had one? I wasn't there.
We did. Dick came to that one.
I thought, did like.
I remember you.
You already, oh.
Last.
I wasn't at the last meeting.
Did anyone go to the last?
Porto.
It was a great meeting. Breckenridge Open Space?
Yes, we had a meeting eight days ago. It was great. We had the, the presentation from Craig and Sam at T H K and they were phenomenal. They really, as you can tell, they have so much enthusiasm, really had read the master plan multiple times, had it all tagged up with sticky notes of all the things they care about. So they really care about our values and what's happened. So as you know, we're in good hands. We also got to look at and touch and hold the new, some of this new signage for the pilot signage plan over in Illinois Creek and what that sign looked like and made some decisions on what material was best out of the three that were suggested. And, and that was great. And we went with a die bond type sign, which should hold up well. And also if we do change things, it's, they're, they're flexible. And it's going to be a heavy lift for the Trails crew and it's going to be expensive, but it's something that we're, we're going to do this pilot program for the summer, see how it goes, get some feedback back and then decide how to proceed. So they're putting together some financial projections of if we do move forward, what that sign looked like over the next X number of years. The only other update is that Lorium, the construction for the new parking area will begin in August and should be finished this fall. That's all I got.
Great. Rec tourism offense?
Have not had a meeting since our last council.
Great, rec history?
They wanted to say thank you for not touching the rocks out there on the McCain as part of this updated parking. Also happy to help if any interpretive work is done on the old dredge rocks. And then we have a meeting July night.
Were they one of the stakeholders in the consultants list? I don't remember saying they were.
Okay, great.
You, rec creative arts?
We had a retreat last week. Dick and Todd joined myself, Shannon, Julia for an afternoon of kind of getting to know the folks at Rec Create. They were introducing the partners program. I was scheduled to attend a budgeting meeting that got canceled out. So that's in the process and we took our turn today. Next meeting is not for another two months, I would think.
Great, okay. Carol, C M O? I don't know. Are we still reporting out on that?
No, at some point, I feel like we'll do a legislative recap, but otherwise just the conference is happening now. Town staff is hosting a lot of events. I know Matt mentioned earlier that Teddy was taking a group or dozen or so on a e-bike tour and housing will be showed off and all that, so.
Yeah, Laurie's doing a housing tour at some point, too.
She did it today, yeah, I think too.
We have, um. Yeah, is on a panel. Tamara is presenting on a panel. I'm on a panel. So Keely's presenting. So we have pretty good representation.
Works.
All this year.
When is the cast reception here? Remind me?
It's Thursday afternoon. Happy hour.
After the farmers market.
Gotcha.
Okay, social equity?
Yes, we did have a meeting last week. Just a couple highlights of things that came out of the, from commissioners. There's a Spanish fitness class that has been happening and it just refined to be a multiple-session series. There's also a Spanish adult beginner swim lesson. And then one of the commissioners had this idea and worked with the rec department and Avalanche Bike Shop. So there's a free beginner bike clinic that happened. The first one was the day of the farmers market, but there'll be three or four others throughout the summer. And it's been a great collaboration. Sounds like people really enjoyed it.
Cool.
Decent attendance for the first one?
Yeah, I think we capped attendance at 14 and it was full.
That's awesome.
And mixed ages, mixed abilities, everything. So introducing a new part of our community to.
That's great.
That's great. Avalanche partnered on that. That's cool of them. Master Plan Steering Committee?
We got an update yesterday that 726 completed surveys for the Arts and Culture Survey that we put out. Over half of them was from the town's email database for water billing. And then the rest were, you know, postcards from the BCA, rec film, theater, N R O, the download, rec history and mountain dreamers. Really excited to see that approaching 1,000 respondents. So it's still open for another couple of weeks.
Great. Excellent. Must have passed.
It must have.
All right, any other matters?
Just like to remind everybody, go to the farmers market. Just about everybody, I think, in this room was here, was there for that this weekend. It was a great event. So I hope we can continue to promote that in the town and lots of longtime local people there. So it was, exceeded my expectations of what it would be.
And I heard a discussion between Nicole, the organizer, and Brienne from FERC about trying to, some of the food left that farmers were willing to try to get some fresh food to the food bank. So they're trying to be strong community partners right off the bat, which is great.
That's great. Anything else? Okay, I'll do it. What about the spring? Who wants to talk about that? So is there really no other option? Why are we spraying? I felt like we had this discussion right?
Three weeks ago.
And it was like, hey, yeah, let's look at what all the options are. And then I was like, we'll be spraying your neighborhood this week.
So James, can you come down to the podium and?
Sorry, James. No, you, no, you thought you were.
While he's walking, the cast reception is Thursday from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Base 9 Bar at Beaver Run.
Thank you.
Hi. Yeah, obviously I was here and heard the comments that were made.
Yeah, obviously I was here and heard the comments that were made. And I guess where we're at with spraying is, is that while we, through the presentation, we did make a commitment to try other products. But there are some of the noxious weeds that, that we do have within the town limits do require, you know, some of the other herbicide that was mentioned. I think through, maybe it wasn't described enough, but a lot of the treatment, it's all in the kind of the application of it. And we want to follow up with the individual, but I know that we weren't just spraying it in, in, in a manner that killed everything, you know, along the roadside. Even that, that type of practice would, would not be acceptable. The type of applications that are going on right now are, you know, just as the same as I stated several weeks ago, very surgical and application where it's just with a, you know, wand and basically touching the plants that need to be eradicated. So I guess, I don't know if there was a misunderstanding on, on my part, but there was, there is the, still in my belief, I need to use some herbicide for some treatment of some of the, some of the plants.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say that I think it was my misunderstanding that they had to be. I thought what you just said was clear and that is what I took away from the discussion. I guess I was more hopeful that there was gonna be something else we could use, but you're saying, no, there's not.
Well, for some, for some of the plants, certainly. I mean, one of the things that we're applying right now is a new product that wasn't known to us several weeks ago for, for the dandelion. And obviously there's, depending where you've been in the last several weeks, there's dandelion on a lot of the grounds that historically haven't had as much dandelion. And so that was a very conscious effort on our part not to do anything until we kind of pass through the discussion with town council. But based on that discussion and, and just again, what I believe to, to be some of the direction and some of the support for, and, you know, trying other product, we are in fact doing that.
Is it less toxic than other product?
Yes, the, the other product that we are testing is, is less toxic. It doesn't, it doesn't check any of the boxes that, that are known carcinogen, carcinogens.
I, I appreciate your clarification and would support you reaching out to the, to the community member that spoke earlier and, you know, and hear her out and clarify where needed.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we made contact. We made sure that we made contact with her before she left and we plan to follow up with her tomorrow just to kind of, you know, get, get that side of what she observed and what was, you know, certainly observed after the, after the fact in that spraying application. We've also worked with both our contractors already. As mentioned, that the county does a lot of our applications. So we've already really emphasized and stressed to them just the sensitivity of this topic and how careful we really need to be. And you probably have noticed that we put up V M S boards and got out on, you know, got out on the communication side of things that we're really trying to get out in front of this and, and give the, the public an opportunity to contact us and kind of hear their concerns and sort of alleviate any of the, you know, any of the facts or the facts that they might not know about some of the product that we're using and where and why.
All right. That's great.
And, and I'd like to just say that I think we did have this conversation about intentionally surgical application of the bad stuff. And I, I know that the town of Breckenridge is not the one applying that under the circumstance and we're just all hopeful that the county was listening. There were county representatives in their ear.
Yeah, we, we had a chance to follow up with the county half several times because they were, they were a little unclear whether or not we were gonna, you know, kind of go forward with, you know, contracting with them to do some of the, some of the, the larger areas that are, they're more efficient at. And again, we took that opportunity to really underscore the need to be very surgical and careful in that application. And I can say that they, they don't only heard that, that they also assured us that that was gonna be the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
This is the surgical application of the carcinogens.
Meeting adjourned.